Hi, Ms. Patricca. I have a pen. Can I borrow? Good afternoon. Are we on? Good afternoon. It is Monday, January 24th. We are here for a board workshop. Today's order of business is the superintendent search finalist discussion. Then we will have the agenda review, followed by good of the order. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we will be having discussion today, and then tomorrow we will be bringing it back to the briefing, good of the order, to make our final selections, so that the public has an opportunity to give their feedback. So within saying that, we have online with us today, we have Molly. Molly, say your last name. Please introduce who's online with us.
Molly Forcaccio, Ray &amp; Associates.
Thank you. Mike, if you'll introduce yourself, and same with Dale.
Go ahead, Dale. I'm Dale Caldwell.
Hi, and I'm Michael Collins, and it's a pleasure to be with you today.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and, Mike or Molly, give you the floor, so you can walk us through the process, please.
Molly, go ahead.
So, Mike, so the process itself is we, I'm going to go over the survey, and Mike and Dale can jump in at any time. We put the survey out for your selected individuals to complete for each of the five candidates. I know there was a question regarding only having a, or concern, I guess, of having up to 46 participants. Please note that each of your five selected individuals, so there's 35 total, had to take it for each candidate. So if everybody had taken all five candidates, we would have had 175. Clearly, some folks took it for some candidates, but not for all. That's not abnormal. People tend to complete the ones that they feel the most apt. So you'll see on the survey to go through, we sent several attachments. One breaks down each candidate individually, so that you could see how they arranged for each of their questions. And then we did a side-by-side comparison, where it has all the candidates, where you can see how one candidate compared against the other. Mike and Dale, do you want to jump in?
I would like to add is that, so today is that where you had a chance to interview five candidates. Your selectees had a chance to watch those interviews and share their impressions, of which you have the results. Particularly charted in graphs for you, so it's much easier for you to follow the responses, both overall and by individual candidates, from your selectees. Now, keeping that in mind as part of your conversation, our suggestion is that we go through and do the matrix again, except do it for only these five candidates. Following the completion of the matrix and scoring of it and the presentation of that information to you, then we would suggest you engage in conversation and build a sense of, we understand that this is just to lead to that point, and that tomorrow you will then continue to take public input, and then ask your, who will be your final? But we're asking to lead those through the conversation.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, but there are some of the members who cannot hear you or understand what you're saying. You're breaking up.
No, it's worse.
Pardon me?
Has everybody muted their computers?
We're not.
Talking to them, I guess.
They look like they're all muted.
Earphones, that would help.
Pardon me?
Nope, that was very clear. That word.
Okay. So let me try now, and you know President Jordan's work.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Collins.
Okay, so we will do the matrix, you'll have the conversation, keeping in mind the impressions that your selectees shared with you. And you will get to the point of actually stating consensus. You will not do that until tomorrow. That then will put us in a position for you to be ready to take the next step. And remember, the next steps are focused around one thing and nothing else. Five candidates. Who would you like to consider as your three finalists? That you want to hear even more detailed information from, and that you actually want to bring them to the attention of your broader school public. That's what you're deciding, that's what you're talking about today and decide tomorrow. Are there any questions?
Please, who has any questions? Ms. Gittens.
Okay, one question is about the survey. First of all, the five people that I chose, only three of them got the survey. Others, you know, pulled down the information offline. And it was confusing. I don't know. I was just, I was very disappointed that at the last minute we had a survey monkey to come out and not have an opportunity to really go over it with the individuals that were supposed to be doing it. And it also was not, I'll take this down, it was not locked so that individuals could just do it once, or not share it with others. And, but it's done. I don't really feel very confident in the results of the survey monkey at this point, because I don't think that there was enough control over that. And as far as the matrix, is this matrix that we have here going to be the same as last time, where we're given different numbers? Because the result of that was, when it was published, people thought that my scores were somebody else's scores, because I'm District 5. And it showed that I gave zeros to the superintendent, and I did not. So I have an issue with the way the matrix works, unless it's explained to the public that these numbers, where it says board members, are not District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
We'd be happy to make that explanation clear without any problem.
Well, I'd like for you to-
Mr. Collins, can you, can you please just, when Mr., when Dr. Caldwell was here, he stated that, and I believe Molly as well, stated that the numbers were, everybody was picking a number. It did not coincide on what their districts were. But I want to put that out there publicly, that by no means did these numbers coincide with board members. It was a pick of a number. It was, nobody knew who had what number. And that's how everything was filled out and turned in. There were no names associated. There were no district numbers associated with it. And so, in saying that, if it said 5 on there, that did not mean that was Ms. Gittens. If it said 4 on it, it did not mean that was myself. And it goes the same for everyone. I just want to make sure that that is perfectly understood, so that there is no confusion of the last one that was completed by the board. So I think that's pretty clear. I'm sorry?
And the same thing will hold, and the same thing will hold true this time.
Okay, so- In saying that then, Mr. Collins, who will be receiving these? And how are we getting these to whoever is calculating the scores? Because there is no one here from Ray &amp; Associates. And Ms. Giavennelli? Please, answer the-
Sorry. I sent a copy to Lizette Roman and asked her to make copies and to be prepared to scan copies directly to myself. And I will score it, and then pull it up and shoot the screen, so that everyone can see who is who.
Finish my-
Go ahead, please.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to say about the rubric. I think for the fidelity of it and the transparency, that even though we are given different numbers, we should be holding ourselves accountable, and either staying in the room and sitting here and completing it, as to not give the appearance that we are collaborating in any way. I believe that that should be a little tighter than it was before.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, my concern is that we don't have the mishap happen again with the toleto lean. How do we avoid that, since y'all didn't know how that even happened to begin with? So that's my concern, is how do we keep from having that mishap happen?
Thank you for asking that question. So you will be sending me the word document. I've got a copy of that. I have an Excel spreadsheet that I'm going to go ahead and put those numbers in. I will share with you exactly what I have. And there is now a bottom column where it tallies all the numbers, so it shows that there is consistency and that nobody got miscounted. There is now procedures in place to make sure that does not happen. And I will go over that, once we have the completed matrix. I will go over that in detail and show you the precautions that we put in place because of that last incident.
So I honestly want to, even, and thank you for that information. Thank you for that question, Ms. Giavennelli. Because, again, we are not, we're using this matrix, or you're wanting us to use the matrix. However, I just want to make sure that we understand that there will be no consensus today. So I just want to make sure that's perfectly understood, so we don't have anybody thinking otherwise. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. How many responses on the survey monkey? In other words, how many different people not, you know, it's kind of hard to understand, since some people did not rank all of the five candidates. We should have had from the board 35, and then there were another, what was it, seven? From, so it should have been 42 respondents for each, even if they weren't complete responses. How many did we actually get?
146.
And then I have another question on that.
I'm going to pull up this now. So if you look at each of the individual files, I pulled up the ITR survey. You can see that under each question one, it said candidate name, and then third, 26 participants completed a survey for candidate R. If you open up ITC, 27 participated with that online survey.
Yeah, I-
Candidate C P has 29. Candidate C B, C as in cat, gives him boy, has 39. Candidate R has 25.
Yeah, but that doesn't tell me how many, did we get 42 total people? That responded in any, in any way?
There's no way to track that. We just have to look at the total numbers. It would be 42 times 5. If everybody had taken every single survey, that sum would be with a total. However, we did not reset number, so not everybody took all five surveys.
Okay, so we don't, when we're looking at this, we're really looking at a very small cross-section. And the other thing that, I had two other concerns, or things that disappointed me. One was, we selected community people, we selected parents, and then we had the people, district administrators. Now, on one level, of course, that's so that we would have, as we selected these people, a variety. But the thing that I'm disappointed in is, I really wanted to see if there was any trend, for instance, maybe that parents like candidate A, but district staffs like candidate C, or something like that. So we have no way to track that either, do we? No?
No, unfortunately, we do not.
It's also because we chose to put it together in groups, and they only address as the group. They weren't put together by parents as a group, students as a group, administrators as a group. The grouping also provides the, that's not, that's not good or bad. It's just what it is.
No, I understand that, but I was disappointed when I first saw the survey monkey, which I didn't like the idea of survey monkey in the first place. But when I saw it, I thought maybe the first question would be for them, are you a member of A, Community B, that sort of thing? So, I mean, it's done. It's done now. But I just wanted to say that going forward, and I wanted to say that for community members who may be here or may be listening at home, that, you know, they see, oh, well, look, look, this is clear-cut, so-and-so was the clear-cut favorite. But in reality, we're looking at a very, very small piece of the pie in looking, in looking at this. So I mostly, I mean, this has, there's some great comments, and I'm happy for that, that there was a space for them to actually write in comments. And certainly, I read many, many comments online from people who sent in comments. But people out there in cyberland and here in the audience need to know that what we're looking at on this chart really is a very, very small group of people. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Ms. Patricca?
So to get to a point that Ms. Vaughn just made, the level of engagement that I've seen from the community on this decision has been rivals that of reopening schools. I've had numerous phone calls, not just with the people that I chose to put on the committee, but others as well. They're reaching out to me. I mean, I've worked nonstop on this, responding to constituent feedback, plus the emails. I mean, the number of emails that we've received. If I were to do this process over again, I would ask Ray &amp; Associates, I would ask for those emails to be directed to Ray &amp; Associates, so that they could find the trend data. Because I'm doing the trend data myself, and it's incredibly time-consuming. And every other piece of this process has been made easier by Ray &amp; Associates. So I would give them that heavy lift if we were to do this again. But I have been, while this is a small sampling, we have certainly had the opportunity to hear from a wide, wide swath of the community on their own. And I believe the community is taking this very seriously, which brings me to the table today, very excited to have this discussion, based on the feedback that I've received from the community. So, and the other piece too, is hindsight is always 20-20. We did not ask Ray &amp; Associates to provide us this data from categories, so to speak, from school-based personnel, from parents, from community leaders. And hindsight is 20-20. I hadn't thought of that until you brought it up. And perhaps if we, as a board, had thought about that easier, they would have provided that to us. So those are my comments as we head into the excitement of the meeting.
Ms. Vaughn?
Well, I'm certainly excited, and I'm thankful to Ray &amp; Associates for the work they have done. But I'm just going to put something else out there. If we weren't in such a big hurry to get this done, we might have been able to express some of these things to Ray &amp; Associates. I feel like as a board, a lot of decisions were made by just a few individuals when they sat down to do some of these things. And I'm not talking about Ray &amp; Associates here. I'm just talking about a timeline that could have been adjusted. And again, I want to put out there for the record that I'm very unhappy at the rush of this, and the fact that there were decisions made about all kinds of things that we, as a board, did not weigh in on. So that's for the general public, that I'm saying that.
Ms. Morgan?
So, I would say that where, okay. I am very pleased with the candidates we got. I think that if we, whatever candidate we select, as long as we all agree on it, this district will be in a better place because of the process we've been through. I don't think extending the process makes any difference in terms of the kind of candidates we have, the process we've used thus far for evaluating them, and the proposed process going forward. I think the weakness in our accelerated plan is that we don't have as many opportunities with the last three candidates for members of the public to meet the candidates. But on the other hand, we have 95,000 students, their families, their teachers. Everybody wants to meet and talk to these individuals, and it's just not going to be possible. We've been elected to make this decision, and we've followed the process. And in any process applied generally to every district in the U.S., there are going to be glitches in particular districts with particular issues. But I don't think anything has gotten in the way of us having quality candidates, a quality decision-making process, when it came to taking us down from 10 to 5. And I don't think there's anything to interfere with our taking it from 5 down to 3, engaging the community in making the solution. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
And, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to say it was a terrible process or anything like that. There were things that, when I look at this process, and I brought up several times, the way it was done previously, and successfully, and the community was involved from the beginning, and everything worked. And my concern about it was, and I won't just say Ray &amp; Associates, but the board as well, no one listened to that carefully in the beginning. So, including the community in the search committee was kind of an afterthought, so therefore the survey was an afterthought. It was not something that was in there initially. I have, and I'll share with all of you, the processes and the way it was done in other districts, and the way it was done here. And you start from the end and work your way back. We, for some reason, are rushing and rushing. We're in it now, and I understand that. But for example, this, the list of the two days, this should be split up. You're asking, we're going to have these people in here on Monday, from 7:30 in the morning until 6:30 at night, without any feasible breaks to regroup. They're going from interviews with all seven of us to lunch with students, which we didn't know about that until we got an email saying that that was another. It's like things just keep, oh, let's do this. Okay, yeah, we'll add this. Instead of us having a master plan, that this is when we want to see a superintendent hired. The three months before that, they can be here to overlap with the other superintendent. The month or two before that, we work on their contract. The month before that, and just work into it. They're going to be so, and yeah, you can say, well, if they're up to the task, this will be fine, they can work through this. But is it even really fair or feasible not to break this into two days? And have all this stuff that we're doing on the Monday, and lunch with the kids, and then have them do the writing or something later? It's a lot. And as far as the reception, there are 100 and some people on that list. Our advisory board is not on, our boards are not on there. And the search committee that we asked to, in 24 hours, make their decisions and do a rubric and watch an hour and a half for each person, we're not even on the list to be invited. I just feel we're rushing. I just feel we're rushing. If we split this into two days, we would get a better quality of response from everyone, and we could have a special meeting the very next day and do the same thing. It's one day.
Ms. Gittens, the list was a beginning list, and all of you were sent that so that everybody will be included. So when you're saying that a list was made without all of them, that's not correct, because it was sent to you all so that way you have input so that everybody will be engaged. This has been going on since August, so that's five months that this process has been going on as well. But I just wanted to say, when you're saying that a list came out, the list did come out for you all to put your comments in there and add who we did not have on there.
But there's already 150 people, and I just feel it's just, I know I'm not going to be hurt, so go ahead. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, did you have any comments?
Well, I think my only comment would be that we did all agree on the proposed timeline that was given to us by Ray and Associates, and that we have had ample opportunity for the public to be involved right along throughout the whole entire process. We have had, I think Ms. Patrica said that she was happy with the number of emails and returned comments about the applicants. So I kind of agree with Mrs. Morgan that, you know, we're at this point, and there should be no reason why we can't move forward and narrow this down to three finalists, sticking with our agreed-upon timeline.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jevonelli?
So, yes, we did have a timeline, but we really didn't have details of what was going to happen. Like, for example, perfect example is this lunch scheduled on here with the students. I mean, we just didn't have any real details. But my concern has, is, I'm going to go back to something that no one's talked about today, was the fact that we could be making all of this and this decision, and then come March, we know that there's going to be an elected superintendent on the ballot. And we, as a board, have not addressed that, and I don't think it's fair to three candidates, much less five candidates, that they're not aware of that. And yes, one candidate didn't mention that he was aware of it, and it was up to the candidates to find out their own details of what's going on in our legislation in Florida. But I don't really think that is fair. My concern is, you know, was, did that affect the quality of candidates? So there's a lot of aspects with that. I had suggested waiting till we knew where that was going to go. So that was my concern over the rush. Yes, I agreed with the timeline, only because I'm going with the board's decision, because it is the will of the board. But my concerns are the fact that we have this legislation pending over our heads. And I spoke to one of the legislators yesterday, and he told me, it's going to go through. The elected superintendent is going to be on the ballot. So that's a big deal. And he said it's got major traction, and that's going to go through. He gave me a bunch of other things, too, but that was really the most important thing at this point in time because of what we're doing presently. So that is my concern. And then that goes all the way up to possibly in November. We're rushing this because in November, this board could look very different, and that's a whole nother issue. I am being told that there's a good possibility that the new board will come in and fire the present superintendent and hire a new one on their own. So that is a reality that we need to be addressing, and that's why not the rush. We need to, this should have been a slow process because of those factors mainly, because the community is going to speak at the end of the day, and then that's where it's going to end up. And, you know, I'm just going to, I'm just laying it all out there. We have a duty to the, to the community, and so I just question that. But if this board chooses to pick a superintendent, I'm ready to go.
But can I, can I ask something? So, yes, there is an election coming up, so does that mean that we don't do the work of the board because what may happen in November?
No, we have a superintendent presently. So I don't understand. We have a superintendent, so that, that's not going to change. So I hear what you're saying, but work's being done. Nothing's stopped, unless y'all stop something, because I haven't stopped anything.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, and let me just-
Morgan?
Let me just clarify. Board members seem to think I'm against the timeline and all that. I'm not against, and as Ms. Jevonelli said, I went with the will of the board. All I'm asking, and I do agree with Ms. Patrica, we've gotten a lot of input, and I'm not asking to change that. My only question was, at the reception, the people that have been working with us, why can't they be invited? I'm not asking to stretch it out anymore. I asked for-
Totally can be.
Okay, well, they weren't on the list, so that was why I asked. But anyway, that's one thing that I asked. The advisory boards and the search committee people be invited. Just wanted to bring that up. The second thing is, I didn't ask to change the whole timeline, but if you look back at previous superintendent searches, we did do all of this over two days. And all I'm saying is asking for a half-day to spread this out so that there's not so much rush and stress on, even on the candidates and everyone. So I was not going against the timeline, and I'm not saying we didn't get a lot of feedback. We did. I'm not asking for more feedback. Understand what I'm saying.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so in response to the question about the, that we were sent about the attendees, I did respond and made some suggestions, and those suggestions were incorporated in the revised list. I do agree that we need, we need to invite the advisory committee people. Now, some of them may be already part of other lists. I don't recall, you know, who's on the list and who's, who is a committee member, but I do think that's important. I also share Ms. Gittens' concern about the schedule. I mean, essentially, yeah, I mean, it's a long day, no break. Some of these people have jobs. You know, I'm just thinking, you know, is, can we move something to the next day? You know, maybe that section of written communication, experience-based interview, board panel interview. Actually, I need somebody to remind me, because I can't remember what the experience-based interview is, who's doing it, and what the board panel interview is and who's doing it.
Ms. Morgan, Rob, Mr. Dodick will be given a-
Oh, okay.
Will give an update. And this is why we're bringing this here?
Yes.
So that, because I certainly was not going to be the one who said, hey, let's change this or let's do whatever. It has to come from all of you, because you're not coming at me and saying, hey, she did this. So that's why we will have this conversation. I don't want you to think I'm nuts.
And Ms. Rivera's here. She has, we've been through three or four different schedules, and we're trying to work with the board member schedules. And there's some understanding that several of you are going to Tallahassee next week. And it was decided that Monday was the best day to do this, and then have a meeting for you to choose the superintendent on Tuesday. So that's why it was done this way. We're as flexible as you want us to be to arrange this. We do have a short period of time to schedule flights and hotel rooms, and it's a difficult time of year in southwest Florida to do that. So we're certainly privy to that, to answer Ms. Morgan's questions. The written communication, we sent to the board over the weekend. Don't want to discuss that publicly. The experience-based interviews will be a team of selected principals, district administrators, and community leaders. And the board panel interview, obviously, is self-explanatory. That's with you all, with the candidate in this room. So those are the three.
May I, for suggestions? If you're, if they're coming in on Sunday, why couldn't Sunday be a portion of this? If Sunday, you know, we're not leaving, and I know it's not optimal, but this is a lot, people.
Smiling because we had another option that we pulled right before the meeting? Where Sunday was a large portion of the interview process, but I think there was a reluctance to have people work on Sunday, or the public wanting to, certainly, the thought was we would do the individual interviews with board members on the Sunday. But I don't, with talking with the chair, we weren't comfortable necessarily doing that
Without.
Without all of you, but that's certainly an option. So you would basically split the morning and put that on Sunday, and then what's on the afternoon on Monday, you could put in the morning on Monday. Now, there is a board meeting advertised on Monday, and I talked to Ms. Schaefer before we came in here, so we don't want to hinder the advertisement, which I believe has to be sent out today or tomorrow. So.
Today.
But if we adjusted the time instead of 7:30 to 11:30, may push it up and make it later on the Sunday, and I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not in any way saying we have to do this, but perhaps we, as a board, could agree to do that so that we wouldn't be forcing so much into one day.
Sure, and that doesn't need to be advertised, because they're individual meetings with each of you. The, obviously, Ms. Rivera would need to know, because we're, possibly, candidates are from all over the country, so we have to try to get them here and ready for all of you on Sunday, that would mean. So they would more than likely have to come in on Saturday.
So as Mr. Dodick is saying, there were-
And that's this Saturday, by the way, so.
Correct. There were options to that, having it split. But there, again, I was not comfortable with making that decision without it coming here, because of course it has to come before all of you. You make those decisions, and then we're good with that. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I think-
I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica.
I'm hearing us jumping all over the place in terms of, well, let's change the schedule, let's do this, and I feel like we're spinning our wheels. But one of the big things on this, and you can tell from my email that I sent to everyone how I feel about the reception extravaganza, I want to ask the board, what is the purpose? Can you put in words the purpose of the reception and the objectives? And by the way, my last comment, hopefully, everybody saw the sarcasm in it. Are we going to have each person who happens to be able, of the thousands of people that are going to show up, to talk to one of the candidates for two minutes? Or are we going to have everybody fill out a ballot on the way out? I mean, what is the purpose? Who can ta, can I, I'll ask Mr. Dodick.
Oh, you can. I thought you were asking the board members, because-
Oh, no, I want to ask you first.
Yeah, my understanding of the purpose is-
What is the purpose?
And I think this has been said, I think this has been said in the past. As much as you're trying to get someone to come here to be superintendent, you also have to convince them to come here to be superintendent. And there's a recruiting part of this also. So obviously, the expedited timeline, we're trying to work with that, which is something the board wished to do. But we also have to present to them that they're welcome here, that we want them here to lead this school district into the future. And a reception starts that process. That's all I think it is for.
And it is, definitely, it's just common courtesy. It's not, we're not having steak and lobster, we're not doing anything like that. It's just, it's a meet and greet and then a welcome. That's exactly what that is. Like, I don't care who you are when you're coming into a city, when we did the city, chief of police, they did that even. So they brought all of them in there so that people could come, and you, they have a sense of community, they have a sense of who we are as well, because like Mr. Dodick said, they interview us as much as we interview them.
Okay, but it's not one objective to give us as a board, at least it is for me, to observe these three gentlemen in a social situation. Because let's face it, our superintendent does a lot of social situations and out in the community. And it's all well and good to welcome them and to, you know, oh, look, here are all of our people, and they're all coming to see you. Okay, that's all well and good, but I am being more selfish about this. And my selfishness is, we need to see them in this situation, and the people, to me, that are most important to greet and to observe in a social situation are the people that are going to work directly with them. And I think when you have, I mean, you add all the people we're suggesting, you're going to have like 300 people invited, and I know that Dr. Carlin said, well, it's quick and probably only half will come, but you can't have a reception and say, oh, only half of them are going to come. I mean, maybe, but, I'm just, I'm not opposed to reception, but I think this is way over the top. I don't think that, at least my object, my objective in it, in just another opportunity for the board and people that are going to work closely, you know, like the presidents of the two, of our two universities were not on the list. Well, those are really important people. I mean, we have so many partnerships with them. Do we really need every council member? Sorry, council members, but one, the mayor or his or her representative? Why the whole city council? There were three people, I won't say their names out loud, that I put in an email, that I don't see any relationship between them and, you know, the things that we do as a school district, the partnerships, or I think they're just one in particular, somebody's friend, that they feel like, oh, let's have this person in there. So obviously, I'm the curmudgeon or the unsociable person. All I'm saying is, fine, have a reception, but we're going to have 200 or 300 people by the time we add all these people, and that's just crazy, because nobody's going to get to talk to anybody.
Well, my response to that is, my understanding is, there was an attempt to try to limit how many people would be there. I wasn't involved in this social reception necessary in HR. I know Ms. Jordan had asked the chief of staff to champion in that cause, so. But there are two other opportunities, I would point out, in our schedule. The principals are going to have a meet and greet at 3:00 to 5:00 on the 31st, and then there's a community reception in the atrium of this building that evening. So there are other opportunities to talk to these individuals that you choose.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Patrica, and I apologize.
That's okay. Having sat on this board for a major hurricane and having sat on this board for a pandemic, I'd like to see how our candidates respond when they work from 7:30 in the morning until 11 o'clock at night, because there is an expectation that our superintendent will have to do that. So I'm, I mean, I'm happy to go with the will of the board in terms of the schedule, but we have a schedule in place, and I'm comfortable with assessing how that, how the individual will respond under pressure to include a long, long workday.
So I guess maybe we start there, to see who would like to try to do it in two days, or who would like to do it all together on one day? Is that, Mike, Molly, is that what you think we should be? I know you're not here in this room, but as far as doing it on the two days versus doing it all on one day?
All right. I don't know, Molly, can you have a thought on that? I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry? He has a thought?
I would add that it's been a good discussion. I, being a superintendent there is a very difficult job, and I like the comment about the fact to see how they can, can work through a day, a full day. But also, on Sunday, it's important to make them feel welcome. As you heard before, they are interviewing you, you are interviewing them. There are some extraordinary- extraordinary candidates that have options, and so we want to make sure the fit is perfect as possible.
Okay, so hearing what they said, could we, could someone start on, like Ms. Fisher, would you prefer to have everything on one day, or a, or two days?
Well, I think.
Start some conversation on that.
Yeah, so I think the welcome will be on Sunday, and the welcome reception, and I think that we can leave it the way it is, I mean, because that, it's a good point, that it is a full day, but we all have had to put in full days between the pandemic and the hurricane and other situations, so I would say leave it the way we have it.
Ms. Jivinelli?
I'm, I think everybody's worked really hard on this, on this schedule for the next, for those three days, I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement with what's been scheduled, I think at this point, I think it's important to, I mean, there's been a lot of work put into this, obviously, so, and HR's worked really hard here as well, I, I think, I think they've got it together, truthfully, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with my colleagues to the right, to my right. Up to this point, I agree with some to the left as well.
Well, I think I've said what I feel, I don't think it's proving that they can handle a crisis or a hurricane to rush through this in this, in this manner, that's just the way I feel. If we hadn't added more stuff into it, and I agree, everyone has worked very hard, and we appreciate that, but our job is to discuss and see what is the best outcome, so to me it's not that everyone has worked very hard, so we have to leave it. To me, the question is, is this the best way to do it, and I can see which way it's going, and I've made my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to add real quick, there's two opportunities for the community to really meet the candidates, they have the opportunity on Sunday, and they have the opportunity on Monday. So I mean, there's two opportunities. Ms. Gittens, I don't, I don't know if you heard, Ms. Jordan, but you can add to the list, and I think that's what we need to do, and we can talk about that, we haven't got there, you can add to the list.
But can I, can I just stop you one second? I am not concerned about the community getting involved, that's not what I'm doing, I'm not talking about that we need more community involvement, we have done that, all, and, Ms. Fisher alluded to the fact that, you know, we've had the community involved, I understand that, I think it's only respectful to the people that have put in time, and that put in time helping us as advisory, that they be invited, that was all I said, I'm not trying to ask for more community time. What I am talking more so about is the professional, professional way that we have this set up. Are we, are we testing their endurance, or are we testing their ability to give us their best answers? That's my question.
So, I'm looking at it a little bit differently, I'm looking at it that these candidates have jobs and have other commitments, and we're, why maximize their time when, I mean, they may have other things, I mean, get back to work, I mean, I wouldn't, we're taking from their present job, so I think, you know, Sunday, Monday, and, and that'll, I don't even know if they'll stay on Tuesday, I mean, do they stay on Tuesday, or do they go, I mean, what is the plan there? I don't see anything about that.
It would be up to them.
No, I, the plan would be for them to fly home on Tuesday, sure.
So they wouldn't even be here, so I mean, I just think we have to respect their time. I mean, I, I look at that, that's how I look at it, is respecting their time.
Can I just say, since there is no appetite for this discussion, and four have already decided, I think it's a moot point at this point.
Well, I am going to finish, I am going to finish speaking, having other people give their comments as well, but thank you for that, Ms. Gittens.
Okay.
Ms. Vaughn?
The only problem I have with this schedule is, there's not enough time, I would say that for the interviews with the board members, instead of doing 30 minutes, do 25 minutes, because a five-minute in between is next to nothing. I mean, far be it from me, if, you know, candidate needs to use the restroom, or one of us needs to use the restroom, or, I mean, it really, really, you know, or that there's a glitch somewhere, okay? We could still, I think in 25 minutes, we can have a pretty robust discussion with each candidate.
So, do you think then, so, we had talked about different times too, so we increased that, so the 7:30, the 30-minute individual ones, we could shorten that down to 20 minutes?
I was saying 25, just cut, do, do a, you know, like in high school, they have a five-minute passing, how about a 10-minute in between?
Can we do one question at a time? I think that would move things along, so.
We're voting on whether to change this, and what I'm saying is, I'm not, I'm okay with this, but I'm adding something we hadn't discussed or considered in accepting or changing, so I am voting with what.
Okay, and so do I.
Right?
Yes, I do too.
And my suggestion is, since the appetite is to stick with this, and, and yes, there are people that are going to want to get this done on, on one day, but maybe, let's give everybody a little breathing room all morning by doing 10 minutes between each one, because isn't there, is this the one where there's going to be a knock on the door, a slight knock, and then a harder knock, and, I mean, come on, let's ring bells, or whatever, would it be, my vote is, keep this, but I strongly suggest we consider in keeping it, making 25 minutes for each of us to talk to the candidate, and giving 10 minutes in between, for our comfort and their comfort.
Ms. Morgan?
I support that.
Okay, and the reason that we, we said that there would be a knock, that was just because we know some of us have a tendency of continuing conversation when our time, when we have to stop, so that's just the polite thing to do, there'll be a knocking on the door, that gives you the five-minute, hey, start rounding it up, so we could do that in the 20, in the 20 minute, because they would end at 25 minutes then. Is 25 minutes enough time for everybody to speak? Ms. Jivinelli?
Okay, so, it looks like I'm, mine runs really for an hour and a half, basically, right? I think I, I'm sitting up here longer than an hour and a half, I think I can probably hold it a little longer than at that time, if you want to be honest. My concern would be for the candidates, so I think that I'd like to see the time pretty much stay the same, and give a candidate, give the candidates a break a little bit in between one of them, or a time, a period, because it, I mean, it looks like everybody's kind of consecutive, they, you know, they've got 30, 30, 30, I mean, and then they, then they have their freak, it's kind of, so I don't see the need for shortening the time, because I want, I want all my time, just saying, but.
Five minutes of mine.
And mine.
And mine.
Okay, I can talk sometimes, but sometimes I can listen too, so, that's all I'm saying is, the candidates need, they're the ones that would need the break, I don't, I think I can, I'll just make sure I can hold it.
Okay. I'm just going to ask a funny question. How much time do teachers get in between classes?
Right, exactly.
Five minutes.
Are we affording them comforts that our teachers and paras and everyone else don't get in our buildings every day?
Good question. Ms. Gittens, and then I'm going to.
Okay, I, I can go along with Ms. Vaughn's 25 minutes, and I think if you leave it at the 30, and let us individually govern ourselves with that extra five minutes, you all already said staff worked really hard on this, and this schedule is not easy to do, so if we, if we were to put another break in there, then that's going to shift a whole lot of stuff, and create, anyway, what I'm saying is, I'm talking about what she was talking about, doing one break, but anyway, if we leave it as it is, and we all attempt to make it 25 minutes, and give them that opportunity if they, you know, need to, I just.
I just need to know what time somebody is knocking on your door, I'm just saying, they will knock on your door.
25 minutes.
So what time is that going to be, that they're going to knock on the door for you to wrap it up?
25 minutes.
So is it the board's will that we'll have 25-minute sessions and 10-minute break in between? The candidates also deserve to know how long they're going to be meeting.
I'm agreeing with that. We give you extra five.
Yes, I'm doing, I'm.
Are you raising your hands to say something, or agreeing?
I'm agreeing.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the lunch is the, we added students in there, so that way they would bring, we're trying to make sure that everybody's included, and we thought it would be nice to have students come in, and that's probably going to be their highlight of their day, for the students to, to be here and to just have conversation with them, they're not going to have, be given questions to ask, they're just going to be part of the day with these individuals.
I thought that was a very nice touch, actually.
That was, Ms. Morgan, actually, yes, we all, see, collectively, we are fabulous, just saying, so that would be great, and then we'll move on to the written communications and the expert.
Well, I already spoke to them when I answered Ms. Morgan's question, the written communication you have, send Ms. Jordan any suggestions or edits, we will certainly incorporate those, obviously, we don't want to speak publicly about that, either here or anywhere. The experience-based interviews will be principals, select principals, selected administrators, and community members, and the board panel interview is exactly what it says, the candidate will be in here and address you all, and possibly the audience, I did suggest, and I'm just throwing this out there, that potentially you want to have the candidate facing the audience, and also, that means you all have to move, or you're back, or the candidate will have his or her back, or his back to you all, so however that could be arranged, I think I would recommend that.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Looking at the, the two receptions, I think I'm a little confused on the community one, that's just open to any and everybody?
It will be advertised, and yes.
And open to everyone, so why can't the one on Sunday be a little more, and I've heard some board members talk about the staff that will be working with them, the, and just narrow it down, and allow the official, all of that list of officials to join in on the 5:00 to 6:30 if they want.
That's kind of what it was meant to be, so it was just an original one went out to you all, for you to look at that and make your suggestions, tweak it, cut it, do whatever you want to do to it, they were just asked to come up with some names, and then it would go out to all of you to help consolidate that and give your voices.
Well, my final thing on that one would be the, the staff that they would potentially be working with, the advisory boards, and the, the 35 people that were involved in the search, and just keep it a smaller group, and then probably the foundation people.
Thank you. Mr., thank you, Mr. Dotick, are there any other questions for Mr. Dotick? Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I guess it's, is it for Dr. Carlin, if we want to ask more specifics about the reception?
Please, please just send them to her.
Okay, I do want to ask though, the experience-based interview, you said it's going to be administrators and community members?
No, I said administrators from this building, district administrators, principals, and community, select community members.
But you did say community members.
I didn't, not a whole slew of them.
So who's picking these community members? Who are they?
I don't have those names for you at this point.
I would like to see.
Absolutely, we will advise Ms. Jordan as to who that will be, typically, the foundation president has been on that, so individuals of that type.
That, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we're going out on the street, you know, man on the street, hey, you, come on, you're at Starbucks now, come, that's not what I'm suggesting, I would just like to see, because, I, I would just like to see.
I understand, and obviously, we'll provide that to you.
Everybody will see whatever I get.
Well, and, and see, I wonder, because.
I have nothing to do, I have not, I have nothing to do with that.
A lot of these things that I asked for in, in, in questions, all of a sudden they appeared, so it just makes me wonder how much we would have gotten if I didn't ask for various things that.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Appeared.
I understand what you're saying.
And nobody asked me prior to select or to suggest members, I don't know how many people on the board ahead of getting that list last night had that input, but I certainly, I certainly didn't, and.
Ms. Vaughn, can, if I may, that was just, that was just given, asked of Dr. Carlin, and as soon as that was asked of her, she put it together, she sent it, and it was sent out, so that was first, we all seen it, correct?
That's the first time everybody saw it, last, last night, okay, well, I think there's a lot of adding and subtracting that needs to be done, so.
Oh, to the list? Yeah, I haven't seen them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I may, Mr. Collins, I'm going to turn this back over to you all, so we can start doing, and thank you for bearing with us on the details, because you're very much a part of that.
Well, you're more than welcome, and thank you for getting through it, and we're excited to get started. So we're going to turn our attention to the five candidates that you interviewed, and Molly, if you want to provide instructions, and Lizette, make sure that everybody has the matrix, because I think we're ready to start the matrix right now.
Everybody, just see the matrix formula that we used last time, so go through and compare whether you'd like to hand it to two and circle, once you are done, go ahead, Lizette, Lizette, if you would, mind, standing back, so who is who, beneficial, I'll take about, so to score it.
Molly, Molly, I'm sorry, but you, you are breaking up really, really bad, and Ms. Roman is not out here, she's listening, okay, thank you. You, you are really breaking up terribly, so if you could repeat that, I'm so sorry.
Mike, would you mind?
Oh, there you go, perfect. Well, it was. I think you, okay, now you're muted, go ahead.
All right, so, we want to try, try one more time, Molly, let me.
Okay, the matrix, the same formula as last time, so we just asked it, circle one to two, two to three, et cetera, once you are done, hand it off to Lizette, Lizette, you could get copies, find who is who, that's wonderful, then I will take about, just score it on the Excel document, and then bring it to, you the results, and then we can go over the results and, you know, for the floor for this.
Okay, so we are circling, we will be, I think that's what it is, if you mute your computer and speak on your phone, I think that comes out much better, so we are circling the, the people who we, go one to two, two to three, and circling going down, and then after that is completed, then that's going to Lizette, and Lizette's sending this to you? this to you?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and then, and then when, when everybody's done, let's take a 10-minute break, and by the time we come back, Molly will be back scoring it and she'll show it, the whole progression.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I was wondering.
Just being anonymous.
forms out, so once this is completed, then we will be going over each of the, the candidates, is that correct?
Yep. We'll, we'll get the score and the matrix, and then we'll begin our discussion around each of the candidates. And I'd like to start on the positive, for those that want to speak to, for a candidate from a positive standpoint. Not everybody needs to speak about every candidate. Just so we have an opportunity to share what are the things that you feel are positive or advantageous, that you would like to bring them back as a finalist, and have one more interview opportunity with them. That's your focus. You're not picking the finalists at this moment. You're deciding who you want to know even more from, and who do you want to definitely consider as your possible next leader.
Thank you.
I hope that's helpful, President Jordan.
Thank you. So, once everybody's completed, is everyone finished?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we will go ahead and take a 10-minute recess, so it's 2:14 right now, so we'll be back at 2:24, please.
Hey, good afternoon. It is 12:29 and we are back with our workshop from our break. And we have Ray and Associates with us online or on Zoom as you can see. And so, Mike, I am going to, Mr. Collins, I'm going to turn this back over to you, sir.
Okay. So it looks like Molly is still tailing, is trying to double checking.
Okay.
So let us turn our attention to the questions that you're going to be using on Monday. So it's my understanding, just so we have clarity, that the individual interviews by the board members will not have prepared questions from us. And this is also designed to be a conversation between each of you and each of your final list.
That is correct, sir.
So the, okay. Secondly is, obviously, well, I can't say obviously, but the lunch environment with students also will not have questions prepared for them or by them. But it'll be a conversation again, a discussion between the students and each of the final list.
That is correct as well.
The questions that are being prepared for you that we will send you for quick review and any comments or suggestions will be for the overall board panel interview of each of the final list. And also, we're preparing a more general set of questions that'll come from the experienced group, administrators, community people, et cetera. And when I say more general, it's because they won't miss, it's not like the administrators are interviewing separate from the community, separate from another group. So they need to be a little more generalized. Those will be, those are being prepared for us right now. And we envision that you will have these questions to you after your decision making tomorrow, which means you will get them on Wednesday as a, this is a set of recommendations. You will then be asked to do what you did last time. And that is submit your up to 10 favorite questions, either from the ones we offer you or from ones that you've edited that we offered you or for those that you want to have asked, that you've actually given us on your own. But more, but most importantly, in what you did last time in most situations was that you either gave us the questions from our list that you wanted to have asked, or you modified or edited those. And then there were just some individual questions. We would hope that would be the same. We will then give you back a list of 15, max 18, but I'll say closer to 15 or 16 questions, which, given the fact that your interview sessions will take around an hour, hours, fifteen minutes, that's all you would have, that does not account the opening question about them coming back and sharing any other information they would like you to know about them. That's the first question. And then at the end, where they have an opportunity to ask you questions and give a closing statement. So if you ask 16 questions, you really have 18. So those will be prepared and delivered to you in the later than Wednesday. We would ask you to turn those around ideally with the 24, but no later than Friday morning, so we can put them all together, package them up and get them back. And then, and then make sure that they're prepared for when you start on Monday.
Sir, thank you.
Are there questions or effect suggestions about that part of the process?
Are there any questions regarding the comments that he just made, Ms. Gittens?
Is there just going to be, that was a lot. So is there a timeline or something we'll receive saying this will happen for us and have the questions in by this time and do this and we'll receive that? Just a quick timeline of what he said would be helpful.
He's, he's going to send us the, he's doing, Ray and Associates are doing the, the questions for us to ask during our, the board as a collective body, so the panel.
I understand what he said. I'm just saying, can we please get that in a document? Just bullet pointed is, if that's all right.
Mr. Collins, could you please send that?
Yeah, we'll send it as an email.
Thank you.
And it will go to each one of you individually with no problem.
Thank you. Could you do it with like a return receipt? So that way we make sure that everyone has received it. And the reason I'm asking that is that some have, I've heard that some have not, thought that they had not received it. So if you would do that, I would really appreciate it. That way we don't have to worry about someone not receiving that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Dale, I think that's pretty clear on the, and so most of your day, Dale will be with you during this timeframe. Just Molly will be with you in a minute, so. So Dale will be with you because he also will help kind of usher around coordinators and assist with the candidates themselves, so that they have questions. He's kind of their liaison, if you will. We know that you are our client, so we don't get that confused, don't worry. But the fact is that Dale will be an assistant. He will be there on Sunday, so Dale will have time to converse with him as well. And then he'll, he'll also be with you, well, as will I and Molly on line, but Dale will be with you on Tuesday morning when you congregate to make your final decision.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, did Molly, Molly, did you receive everything okay?
Yeah, she's good to go right now.
Okay, so you're good to go.
I just wanted to cover that face while Molly was.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because I thought, I thought there was an issue with the things going to you. But you have received everything?
Go ahead, Molly.
Molly, you're muted, can't hear you.
Yeah, I received everything.
Okay.
However, I do need somebody to give me share screen capability.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, who is, who would that be?
I see.
Okay.
I'm just going to try.
Okay. Ms. Stillwell's going to try. And Mr. Collins, I apologize, I did not mean to cut you off, but I just wanted to make sure that she had everything that she needed. So you were saying that, can you see if you can?
I just said that if Molly stays, we'll just give it to her.
Yeah. Molly, can you see if you can share?
Okay, can everybody see what I have?
Yes.
Okay.
Can everybody see?
So I'm going to go over it real quick. We've got candidate Christopher Bernier with 22 points total, because he did come in first. Candidate three, these are just in alphabetical, so there's no preferential order here. Second place was Randy Mallorin with 14 points. Third place, third place was Michael Ramirez with 13 points. Fourth place was Charles Jeff Perry with 11 points. And then in fifth was Michael Gall with 10 points. And I just want to make sure so that everybody feels comfortable with these results. That very bottom column where it says total is tracking so that I made sure that each board member selected the same number of candidates in same point system as they're followed, but the tracking system to make sure that nobody was discounted. That's why there's the 10 at the bottom. It's showing that each board member was calculated, they have the same matrix, the same number of candidates, et cetera. So at that point system does not count for anything other than just double checking or work.
Okay. So what is our next steps now as far as Mr. Collins or Molly?
Now would be the time to open the table for discussion. If you want to look at bringing in your top three, you know, based off no discussion, you'd be looking at candidate one, candidate three, and candidate five. But you want to open the table for discussion to see what everybody's thoughts are and see if that's the direction the board would like to move or if they'd like to really bring in a, you know, an argument from somebody else.
Okay, and then.
And we're well aware that you're not going to make that decision today. You're going to wait till tomorrow with community input and then, and then you'll finalize it. But I guess I would like to suggest that you at least spend a little time in conversation if you're so willing. And then therefore, I guess I would ask the starters, are there, any of you, and again, you don't all have to speak on any candidates.
Sure.
But are there any of you that would like to speak to a positive or positive about any of these candidates? And President Jordan, if you, if you obviously would share, just call on people and then we'll all take notes together.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins. I'm Ms. Patrica. You had your hand up, and then Ms. Gittens.
I just have a question regarding process that we'll go through. So we'll have the discussion today, tomorrow during the briefing, we'll take consensus and it will be added to consent for tomorrow night.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Dupree Bruno, correct?
Correct. So the consensus will actually be during your good of the order, so that public comment can take place prior to.
Okay, Ms. Gittens.
Is that at the six o'clock meeting you're saying?
So at the briefing tomorrow.
Oh, at the briefing.
You have public comment and then you'll have your good of the order because public comment is at the end of the briefing. And then you will have your action vote at the action meeting.
Right, okay. And I guess my question is, what is the premise behind choosing three? That it's, is that what we are, we have to do? Can we choose two? I don't know whose decision that, that was.
It was ours and we decided to do it in the event somebody dropped out.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments regarding any of the candidates?
Anybody want to speak for any of the candidates?
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, please.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to speak for a candidate, but I want to speak to what it was that I, you know, my reaction to the candidates and sort of the thoughts that I had in mind when I went through it, please.
Correct.
So generally, I felt that the responses to all of the questions were fairly similar. Everybody pretty much struck the same chord. I mean, there were exceptions. There were some great ideas in there from different candidates. So I asked myself, what do we really need in a superintendent? We have a district strategic plan. It needs to be revised and updated for COVID and just for where we are with learning loss. But what we haven't had with our district strategic plan is real accountability. And we haven't had accountability across the district, you know, in terms of leadership. Because I think we have a fairly good handle apart from accountability on K-12. You all know my passion is pre-K and CTE and certifications. And everybody has an opportunity either for college or, or a place to land after graduation. And I also believe for that to happen, we have to really get heavy on our relationships with nonprofits, with local businesses, and with the higher ed. Now, we're already doing that, but I think we need to be doing more if we're really going to do for kids what we're, what we've been talking about doing. So from my point of view, I wasn't looking for an academic chief. I was looking for someone who could build a team, who could look for key leadership, not necessarily in the education community, particularly for things like operations. So I was looking for someone who could hire a great team, manage a great team, and be able to engage the community. And I mean by, by diverse group, whatever. So I just want you to know that when I assigned my numbers, that's, that's what I did. Now, in that case, Mr. Gall came up higher than he did on the, on the general. And I just want to say that I placed him higher than number five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
I wanted to make a couple of comments based on some of the people on my, in my group and also community. I've had quite a few teachers and school staff to contact me with their response as well. And I thought it was interesting because there were groups that, that got together and then one person contacted me representing a larger group of staff. And it said to me that they are very interested and very involved and very concerned about this process and how very, very, very important it is to their job and to how this district runs. A couple of comments were that some of the candidates were almost too perfect in their, in their answers. And I'm telling you what I was told, that just, I had someone that, with a psychology background that was saying that normally you at least have somewhat of a pause to, to evaluate the question. And if some, some responses were just, you know, almost like they knew this was coming next. And I'm not saying there was any collusion or whatever, but I'm just giving the response. Others said, and a lot of the people that I spoke with said, the one characteristic is that the person needs to be a strong leader. A strong leader that can, and the example was given, to know what their responsibility and our responsibility, and when it starts to overlap, to not be shy in saying, this is why I'm making this decision. And I too was looking for someone of that caliber. I will say that Mr. Bernier was one of the, the top ones that I got comments for from everyone. One of the comments was that his ability to deal with the board where he is currently at, and I will leave that to your looking into it. So coming from a corporate background, and I've brought this up many, many times, similar to what Ms. Morgan was saying, my first thing is a strong leader that is able to make the hard decisions and stand by them and, and stand up to whomever and to be able to, you know, stand by what they decide. Not that they won't change their mind, but that they will have thoughtfully across the board looked at that decision and be able to stand up firmly for it. There were others that individuals said they really liked as individuals. And it was like, they were really good and they would be wonderful, touchy feeling, but they did not have that ability to come and say, no, sorry, guys, this is what we're doing today. And my job is to, operations and to keep everything going. And this is what we're going to do. It's within my purview to do it and I stand by it. So that was, that was a lot of the, the comments that I received. And, and I pretty much went along with, with the comments that were out there. We need a strong leader with a somewhat understanding of the corporate situation because we've got to get all of that under control. So that's my comment. And thank you to those of, that contacted me. Thank you to those on my committee that watched all the videos and did your responses. We appreciate all of the community input. We appreciate all of the community input.
Ms. Patrica, thank you, Ms. Gittens.
So I would agree that building a team, managing a team, is very important. And having that person drive the accountability, I think, is also very important. As I look at our district, assessing talent is going to be very, very important because we have a lot of empty seats in cabinet or new butts in the seats in cabinet. So you look at HR, you look at information systems, the challenges we have right now in finance. We've got a lot of new people in the legal department. I think the one area where we are very solid, Dr. Spiro, as I look at you, is you and your team. I really feel, I feel solid there. I feel like we've got a lot of expertise. We've got a lot of institutional knowledge. And so I, too, am looking for a leader as opposed to an education expert. Certainly, someone who has education experience is important. Budget expertise, to me, is really, 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 really important. And I believe the person who can run this district is in this pool. I am very much still open to the remaining steps of the process. I want to see the group interviews. I want to have the individual interviews. I want to see how they interact with the public. I want more feedback from the community as we take this next step. That being said, something big would have to happen in order for me to say the candidate is not in this pool. And I agree, you know, Mr. Gall was not number five on my list either. And interestingly, the school-based personnel with whom I spoke were absolutely in love with him, which surprised me because I just wouldn't have expected that from school-based personnel. The downside for me with Mr. Gall, I mean, I really, just on a personal note, I was very impressed with him. However, I got very polarizing feedback. People either were yay, number one, or no, number five. And I didn't really get that with the other candidates. And I wonder whether, in the current political climate, whether we need a polarizing leader or we need someone who can bring us more together. So without mentioning any names, Mr. Collins, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Any other comments? Ms. Fisher, please.
Yes, thank you. So during the interviews, I looked for some key characteristics. And so I had actually, my top three are the top three. So I looked for integrity. I looked for expectations. I looked for experience, yes, but experience in team building, listening and learning, and then acting. I looked for indications that this would be a person who would collaborate with the people who are in the seats or are absent from seats in our departments, trust and relationship building. And I also looked at someone who was grounded, who could communicate, and who would engage with all stakeholders. So, and I also looked for a focus on students. And I heard things like, you know, every child deserves the opportunity for an education. And also looked for someone who had a clear vision. So without mentioning any names, I look forward to the next step with the three finalists.
Can I just clarify something?
Yes.
So when I said new talent in legal, I was not referring to our board attorney. You're our employee. I was talking about the people that have just been hired. Sometimes what I say is misinterpreted, and I don't want that to be misinterpreted. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Ms. Fisher, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
I was going to say, the information or the comments, I guess I should say, from Ms. Patrica were exactly what I had in my notes to say about Michael Gall. Because it was, I had the same experience going through how polarizing he was. And I had the same sense that that would not be a good fit. That said, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could take certain pieces of experience of several of our people and mesh them together? Because there's one candidate that I really, really liked, and I really, really liked his Zoom with us and what he had to say. But he was very weak on the budget. And I felt that that was a real negative. And so, yeah, if we could just take little pieces and do something like that, it would be, it would be perfect. But on the other hand, Mr. Bernier, who came out very much at the top, was another one that was actually, because some of the people would say, here's my first choice, second choice. He was often as a top choice. And then the other choices were somewhere in the middle of the rest of them. And one of the candidates that I liked really, really well, but I had the same response as those who were emailing me, is lack of experience in a huge school district. And I think that's a negative for one of the candidates that frankly, I really, really liked his responses. But that does give me pause when a person is used to working in a district that is 10 times smaller, or I guess I should say, 1/10th of the size of this. So those would be my comments. Thank you so much.
Ms. Schivanelli?
Thank you. So I kind of agree with a lot of the things that my colleagues said. Really important for me was the accountability piece and the integrity piece. But team, you know, team, that was probably number one because that's, I feel like that's what we needed. We have not been a team. And I want to be a team with the district, our staff, the board. I want, you know, I want to be that team. So that was really important, is to be that team. However, I looked at one candidate, opposite of what you just said, Ms. Vaughn, is I feel like if you can fly an airplane that's a four-passenger, you can fly a large jet if you have to. So I think that if you have the skill set that it's there, you just got to pull it out when you need it. And so I felt like that the one that was already being a superintendent would have had that ability and knew how to deal with board members and deal with staff at that level. So I did rank him high. However, he didn't come out on top. So, but, you know, it's the will of the board, right? So anyways, I just, that's what I wanted to add. But strong leader is really going to be important in being a team player instead of on the island alone. So I think it's important. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess it's me. I just, I believe that I watched these videos multiple times over the weekend, probably at least three times, three or four times. And every time I watched it, I heard something different. So I spent a lot of time on the computer over the last couple of days. And I did hear those words, integrity, team, what's best for children. And I look at that, and it's like, why are we here? We're here for the children, so we need to make sure that we do have those leaders. When I had an opportunity to speak to some of the references, and the majority of the ones that I've called could not speak enough about those that I was calling on. And I will say, too, when you look at a person in my conversation with them, where when you're on a Zoom, people tend to be so much different than they are in person. So it's really hard to take, who is that person? You know, they could be weaker because they're on there. I know I had a lot of comments that I actually went and I did an Excel sheet to see what the pros and the cons that everybody had stated and who had more than the other, as you said, first choice, second choice, third choice, on down. So I went ahead and I put one together as well because I wanted to capture everybody's thoughts on what their, and what their keywords were for each and every one of them. So in saying that, I just, Mr. Bernier, Dr. Bernier, I can't even say their names, so I'm really in trouble. He came out a lot on the top, but then also when I was looking at the comments, Mr. Ramirez actually had, on our sites, had more comments than anybody for him. But then I did get the negatives about the Colonel, the pros and the cons for him. So in listening to community as well as everyone else, we did get a lot of different opinions. So just taking everything in and putting it all together. And as I think Ms. Vaughn was saying, if we could make that perfect person and pull this from this person and put them all together on who we want them to be, that would be fabulous. But we know we cannot do that. But that's a great thought. And all of you, I thank you for your comments because I believe that listening to everyone's comments and how you went about observing and learning helps me a great deal as well. And I really appreciate community because, as Ms. Gittens said, I had a lot of people reach out as a team. They all spoke together, and then they had one spokesperson who came and gave the spill for the school or their community groups. So I just really want to thank everybody for that. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just was curious if any of the board members wanted to comment on this, a comment that I got a lot, the Florida connection.
Yes.
There were a lot of people that kind of put aside other expertise and all. And many, many times, and they understand the state, and they... And I have really mixed feelings on that because, and that's one reason why I like one person that I didn't feel had strength of experience, but didn't have that connection. And if we look, all of them in our top three do, don't they?
No.
No, who?
Mr. Ramirez and Christopher Bernier are both having a Florida man. And I think that relates to sunshine, I think.
Okay, well, I'm just curious if anybody on the board had a comment or a thought on whether that's beneficial or a detriment for the person to come in with extensive experience or at least some experience in Florida.
Ms. Patrica?
So this is not a flippant response. I didn't understand what Florida man was until I moved to Florida. I'm being serious. Like, there are, there are things about Florida that are very, very unique to Florida unless you're here and you live it and you experience it and you interact with the people on a regular basis. It's a difficult learning curve. So again, I don't want to be flippant, but there's a reason why we're the only state that has a man named after it.
My daughter had explained what it meant.
Ms. Gittens? Well, to me, your question kind of goes full circle back to the concern about the political temperature in our state and our county right now. And I would almost interpret that question to be, do you know where we are politically, potentially politically? And do you understand that what may happen in the future? So in that case, if that was what they were getting at, yes. I've said from the very beginning when we first started this, make sure that they understand where they could be in two years. So if, in answer to your question about knowing Florida and kind of that political scene, yes, I think they should, to an extent. I don't think they need to be able to sit and spout the Constitution book and we test them all day by day.
Ms. Fisher? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so Florida experience. Florida is unique, and especially, you know, with the Constitution and the statutes and the way we certify and license people. So I'm going to just go back a ways, but there was a point in time before I got on the board where we had seven superintendents in nine years. And that was because we had hired people who had no connection with Florida, no community connection, no real understanding of the Florida man. And that kind of stuck in my head. So I did look at people with some Florida experience for that reason. I also looked for people who have had experience, whether not being a full superintendent but in working with larger districts. And I also looked for the experience with the diversity because we are a very diverse district in many ways, geographically, population-wise. So I did tend to lean towards people who had some Florida experience.
Ms. Patrica?
Now that you brought up diversity, I just, I want to make sure that when we talk about diversity, we're not just talking about demographics, but we're also talking about diversity of thought and looking at each candidate's background and assessing their ability to be protective of and inclusive of every single one of our students. I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, I'm going to turn that back to you because I know we're up to the 120 minutes.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. So thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. Obviously, they are well thought out and well played. And again, it simply emphasizes how you all each have said and seriously considered what you heard from the public as well as what your extra homework and number of hours that you've spent in really thoroughly exploring these five people. So now, I think President Jordan, you are ready to conclude this segment of the meeting. Remember, we'll send you an email about the actual timeframe for the questions to you and the request ones back, so we can finalize that for next Monday. Once you have your meeting in the morning, which will share the consent side, and your official meeting tomorrow night, which will then officially name your three finalists that are coming back, actually, to the district on Sunday to be with you on Monday and Tuesday. Then we will immediately, as soon as we hear from you, make contact first with those that are being invited back. And then we'll get them scheduled. From a public standpoint, it's to inform them if they have to begin the schedule and so forth, and then they will converse directly with Lizette or Lauren. I'll get to answering that question in terms of the arrangements. I'll make them on arrangements, but how to, you know, what are your rules, policies governing business personnel, and then, you know, where your receipts go and so forth. And then we will move forward from there. So I just want to say thank you for your talk for today. I asked Dale and most of the others to say. And then we're very excited to, Dale, Persson, and Molly and I from afar, but with you, are very excited to, in essence, to watch your work to facilitate your conversation as you now move to work in a while. And by the way, from, you know, to be with them tomorrow, we will be at it from this time. So I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Collins? No, I'm sorry. Listen, the HR will be the ones who will be taking care of the arrangements, not Lizette.
Great.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
No, I appreciate that, Lizette, not to... No, I appreciate that, Lizette, not to, not to throw another, you know, log on your fire. And we'll work around and do that, et cetera, as appropriate.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, President Jordan. Dale?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate you on the thoroughness of the analysis of the candidates. You, I love your comments and your conversations. I'm looking forward to seeing you in person on Sunday. And it's a great group of candidates, and I congratulate you on getting this far. So take care and we will see you on Sunday.
Thank you. Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And have a great evening or week. We'll see you soon. Ms. DePree Bruno, we need to pause for a moment, is that correct? So that way we can get the superintendent here for?
Yes, we can take a recess. But you know, Madam Chair, I think that perhaps direction from the board on how you want to handle that guest list for Sunday, because I don't believe that was concluded.
Okay.
So if the board can provide some parameters to staff so that?
Thank you.
What you want.
So everybody has received that list. If you all will, please put your suggestions on that and send them directly to Dr. Carlin. That would be what I would recommend.
Need to consider.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and I think it would be helpful to know ahead of time, the venue, not because I need to know where it is, but the capacity of the venue and also the, you know, I'm assuming it's like light hors d'oeuvres or heavy hors d'oeuvres?
And I have something that was just sent us.
Oh, okay.
So in saying that, Mr. Bowers from the foundation, he has been gracious enough to assist us on this. So he stated that he believes we're going to be able to get Chico's. So it would be in Chico's. They have a large, a large room over there. And then he's working with our students, the Sero High and Fort Myers Tech, so that way we could have, and it will be light, light hors d'oeuvres.
Light hors d'oeuvres, right?
Correct. So that's as far as I have right now. And then, let's see, listen.
Is there a capacity on that?
It's huge. It's huge. They could do a couple hundred people, but they're very, they're correct in it because I do this for a living. So what you're going to get maybe, especially nowadays, you might get 50% if you're lucky. So I know that's what we're, we're looking at, even though you have the invite. Let's see what else. And, sorry, I can't see my screen that much.
The only question I have?
And they would be sending the invitation. They'll send the invitation out. The foundation will send it out.
How will that work with Chico's? Because they have the gate and the gate, you have to give a license and be on a list.
They'll just, yeah, it'll just, they'll know that they're coming to that event.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll work that out. He'll, they'll work that out for them. So is there?
So is there, just to finish with this number thing, is there a number we would as a board like to shoot for that, or not? Because when I send my, I've already done it, but I'm going to resend because I thought of one other person that wasn't included, make also suggestions about people that might be eliminated and come to the other reception, just adding our advisory committee members. There's what, like 15, 14 or 15 times?
So you would probably do the chairs of the advisory committees.
Another 100 and something people if we invited all the, was that going to be the suggestion? I'm just.
I would suggest.
Concerned about the numbers.
Personally, I would suggest, it's just my suggestion, the chair and vice chair versus the whole committee because we have the other opportunity for them to participate. But that's, again, that's my suggestion. It's not anybody else's suggestion.
Keeping in mind that DAK is on.
Yes, could you have, what, 100 and some people on that? Ms. Gittens?
Well, I was going to say too, if you're going to go with the chair and vice chair of our advisory boards, then you should have a representative from all of these organizations that are listed as opposed to all of them coming. And that would cut it down tremendously.
And I think you had already shared that. I wrote that, I had written that down.
And, and we're going to have karaoke as well, right?
Karaoke. I will sing for you. That'll get them all out quick.
And that's how we're going to judge them.
If they can see my singing. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I have a question. So are the people on the list, have they already been invited?
Absolutely not.
Oh, okay.
This list just came out. We have not had any kind of feedback yet.
Okay.
That's what we had asked for, the feedback. So prior to it being, anything being sent out, of course, it has come to the board for feedback so that way it's sent out. It would, it will be sent out. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
One thing I just wanted to, to mention based on what you guys are saying, and that's how we're going to judge them.
No.
What, no, I know. I know it was a joke. It just reminded me to say, when we see these people again, you know, we just saw them on screen, I personally get a lot of information about who a person is with that one-on-one. And I think that's, that could be a make or break for me as to how that interaction goes. So even though, you know, for the community, we've chose, may have chosen three, that there's still that critical, critical piece in that final decision, at least for me.
Thank you. So is there any other questions regarding that list? So if you all would, and I know I'm asking a lot.
I already did.
Did it, do it today and get it back to us, that would be really appreciative.
You mean Dr. Carlin?
Dr. Carlin.
Can I ask one more thing?
Yes.
Will we have any idea what the students have to say? This, you know, the students that come to have lunch with them, are they going to be able to, to send us an email after they get back or something to give us an idea what their impression was? Because I think that, to me, that would be important.
That's a great idea. Ms. Fisher and then Ms. Patrica.
And I'm just going to ask the same question. Do they have a facilitator or a group leader or how have they been chosen?
Okay, right now, would it, would it take in place? Because we, this was just thought of, instead of having them, send them out on their own, let them come here, let our kids participate because that was the only timeframe that we had. So it would be one, one senior, and I think I sent this to you, one senior from, well, I'm sure I sent it to you. I don't think, I did send it. One senior from each of the schools, Dr. Spiro and Mr. Simmons, we've asked them to help us facilitate that, to get the students here and then provide lunch for them. There will not be no questions. So we're trying to randomly choose that, who's going in what room because they're not going to, we're not going to pick a, you're going to go to this candidate, you're going here. So it's going to be random and have one from each zone, like different ones from each zones. So we will definitely have participation, but asking them to send us an email would be ideal. That would be great. Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Patrica.
Well, and I understand seniors, but I'm thinking, why not have some students that may have the opportunity to get educated under this new superintendent? The seniors are, they got one foot out the door, but the vested interest are those that are freshmen, sophomores, and, you know, even a sophomore that would have that time and know what they're looking for and their leader for the next three years.
And I think we were thinking of seniors because seniors can drive because they have the ability to transport themselves to here.
But what about juniors then? Because they do too.
That's something we can talk about. Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Jivinelli.
So just in terms of student feedback, whoever on staff is facilitating these meetings, if they could point them in the direction of the superintendent's search website and have them send us the feedback on that website, this is what I asked student advisory to do.
Yes.
And to specifically identify themselves as a student. Because I told them adults aren't identifying how old they are.
Right.
But we want to know what student feedback is, and the best way to do that is I, so whoever in staff is facilitating that, whatever grades end up showing up, if we could just have that feedback come to us.
That's a great idea.
Identified as student, then.
And Simmons, isn't it?
Mr. Simmons, yeah.
Yeah.
And Dr. Spiro?
They could just say student luncheon in the first line.
Well, yeah, but then that doesn't include student advisory.
I know, but at least then we would know which ones were actually here as opposed to students that may just decide to do it on their own.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And I'm so sorry, Ms. Jivinelli, I know it was your turn.
That's okay. Actually, I agree with Ms. Gittens regarding, I think you do, seniors, I know it's an honor and they can drive and I understand all that, but I mean, really, they, they actually, this won't even be their superintendent. He will, they, at all. So, because all three of the candidates that rose to the top are all under a contract at this point in time. So that, I think it's a great idea that maybe, you know, some juniors or some sophomores do drive, but most of the juniors do. So I mean, I don't know that we exclude anyone that can't drive if they have a way, a means to get there. So I think that that can be determined through the principal or whatever, how they're, they're doing that. But I just don't think we exclude anybody. So also, are we providing lunch that, for them?
Yes.
Okay.
And so I think that they heard you. Dr. Spiro? Regardless of age, yes. Grades, thank you.
Is it Taco Tuesday or is it going to be pizza? I'm sorry. I lost that.
But they will have lunch and will not be tacos, I guarantee you.
You made it all this time without one Taco Tuesday.
They will have like a lunch.
We're timing you on that.
No, Taco, Heather wants me to make sure Taco Tuesday doesn't get eliminated, although I got, I did get a good report this week that her, you know, she's been eating lunch at school, so.
Oh, good.
They only have that at that school.
Oh.
Okay, any other comments on that? Everybody good? Mr. DePree Bruno, any comments?
Oh, is this about anything or just about?
Nope, nope, just on, just on this because we're going to end this and go to the agenda review.
I didn't have it.
But we're going to have a pause, a five-minute pause so that way we can get Dr. Spiro. And thank you all for being here for so long and staying with us and we'll, now it's your turn.
Madam Chair, Dr. Savage is right there, ready to go.
Oh, okay. So we will not be pausing. He's ready to go.
Madam Chair, I have a four o'clock hard stop.
Yes.
And I just found out that my facilitator is not going to be on the call, so I need to be home on a computer at four o'clock. So Ms. Stillwell, can I call in? I never talk during Board Agenda Review, so I'll just call in and listen. And if I need anything, I'll say. Madam Chair.
Perfect.
But otherwise, pretend I'm not there. Are we?
Note it, we're pretending you're not there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I normally can do this on the phone on the way home, but I can't today.
No driving and doing this, sorry. Okay, we're just waiting for the superintendent and then we will begin. And Ms. Jivinelli, just as a note, it's Monday, so you could not have Taco Tuesday.
I know. I just was pretending.
Wanted to share that with you.
Mo's Monday. There's a Mo's Monday.
Monday.
Have a Florida meal.
And Dr. Savage has joined us. I believe that everyone has the questions. Whenever you're ready, I'm turning that over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll proceed with item H6. Now, this item was actually polled prior to the meeting, but the question was, why was this item polled and can you advise? So I actually have Ms. Kennedy here to answer that question.
The item that was pulled was the NFL grant. We did submit the grant again. If you recall, we, it came before the board the previous year, and we submitted again the same grant, and it looks like we will be getting it. But it was pulled because there were some questions as to what is the actual cost now and what is the, and the maintenance. So we were looking at getting that information and then putting it on the next agenda.
Ms. Jivinelli, that was yours.
So how much was the grant for?
The grant is for $250,000.
That's what I thought, okay. Then I have a question. So this is, and the grant is going to go to FMHS for their, their field?
The turf field, not the track, but for the?
Right, well, I'm getting to that, thank you. So that's the question I was curious. So have they raised the rest of the money for the field?
I know that they were raising money for the field, and that was one of the questions. And so that's why we, that's why it was pulled because we had a few questions about what is the actual cost today? Because when we actually submitted, it was, it was, we believe the cost has gone up. So we're getting that information as to how much have they raised and what is the actual cost today in maintenance.
Mr. LaRosa's behind you.
Awesome. I'd love to hear the yes to say.
Good afternoon. Right now, they have raised $300,000 towards the track. And they're just kind of waiting to see what the status is on the field to move forward with the rest of it.
So they've raised 300 and if they get the 250, then they're still short a little bit, right?
Yeah, and the, the original cost was from four years ago when they first started talking about this. So I told Dr. Butts that we're going to have to get an up-to-date price on the field. I talked to him on Friday about this, and he told me that they had submitted it to two companies. And on Friday, he was going to kind of press the companies a little bit because they knew this information was needed. I was over there today. They still haven't received the information from the two companies that they're talking to.
Okay. Does the time expire on the grant, like that 250? Do we have to use it by a certain time? I mean?
Well, this is one of the questions that was asked in the meeting that we had last week. I didn't, I wasn't part of the writing of the grant, so that question I'm not sure about. And that was one of the items that was asked in the meeting that we didn't have the answer to.
Okay. Then, then my other question is regarding the track because I was told that the track is going to be redone in March. And that was, I was told that just recently. So is that a waste of money if we do the track and then hindsight, then later do the field? Or do we need to be doing that at the same time?
My personal opinion on that is it should all be done at one time. Because you will save cost if you do both projects together.
And what, does anybody know what the track portion is? I know that's, that was going under the tax, the referendum was being done, and that was on the schedule for, like I said, March, literally March.
Well, the, the cost that was given to us from the school four years ago and the, the cost that they bid out or got information on was for both a field and a track together.
Oh.
The new price that they're getting is going to be a field only.
Oh, then.
Well, are you?
Now, we have, now in regards to the tracks, we're getting ready to get new pricing on the tracks because the company that did the four previous schools that have been done, their, their prices have went way high. So I had a meeting with procurement two weeks ago to talk about rebidding it and getting new pricing going forward with tracks. And Fort Myers High is one of the ones that's being looked at.
Right. And it's really important because the track right now is not even up to par like the other schools. So it's small, it's not, doesn't have the enough lanes, I think, right?
Correct. It's.
Short.
Yeah, it's not, it's the circumference of it, the rate, is where is a question. Yes.
And I know that they do, they used to do an annual track meet there. And I know that they do, they used to do an annual track meet there.
The Edison Relays, you are correct. It's one of the oldest track meets in the state. It's 60 years old. And what the school has dealt with over time, and this was happening while I was still there, now that schools are getting better surfaces to run on, schools are, have quit coming to that meet, so they can go run on a better surface. And it has affected the history of that meet.
Yeah, and I think that's a big deal, that behooves us to make sure that something like that tradition, as you know...
Correct.
That stays and continues, because that's what makes the school what it is, and makes it unique. And so, it's important to continue the traditions that you've always set forth. So, I appreciate that. And so, thank you for the information. I think that we need to be looking at having both done sooner than later.
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask too, because I know Fort Myers High School track is one of the ones that we were opening to the public. So, we have to make sure that it's in good condition...
And it's not.
For safety, so somebody doesn't get hurt.
Correct.
I mean, we know they're not going to get run over by a vehicle, but still, we need to make sure that they're safe.
Yes, that is correct. That is one of the ones we've opened up to the public.
Right. And then, I know when we were looking at it, we didn't have, like, the cost of the maintenance, of what the maintenance would be for the turf, but I think that would be nice to see the cost, what it would cost us to maintain the turf versus what it is actually costing us to maintain it now.
Yeah, and, yes, and Mr. Ross and I, that, out of the meeting that we had last week, that was one of the tasks that we were given leaving that meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larissa.
We do actually have the, from Collier County, the 10-year estimate on what they would have paid had they had the traditional, because they went to all turf. And as far as the answer to the NFL grant timeline, I don't know as far as when we have to expend by, but I do know that we did receive an email today from Miami Dolphins' spokesperson to say they are going to do a press release, I believe, this week to announce that all of the schools that are awarded, and we will be awarded the grant.
Well, and that's important. Thank you, because that could really accelerate what we need to do on our end, so that we don't lose that grant, and that we, you know, capitalize on that. So, I think it's important to move swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair. The next item is item H7, the approval of the amendment of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ESER-2, under the C.R.R.S.A. Act grant. And the question is, please explain in more detail mental health professionals. So, I've got Ms. Kennedy, as well as Ms. Brooks, here to help us with this question.
And that's Ms. Gittens' question?
Right. And if I may, as you look down at positions and all of that, at the bottom, and it says "licensed mental health professionals," and it says "removing," I am just, I was a little confused about this.
So, this is an ESER-2 amendment to, we looked at, the committee looked at, what are the things that we are currently doing, and what changes do we need to make? So, you can see that we made a change to cover the increased insurance cost, and to cover the bonuses and those kinds of things with ESER-2 funds. And we removed 23 positions. And those positions that were removed, 18 of them were LMHP, and I will let Lori Brooks explain as far as what they do. But the reason they were removed is we currently have, I think, 27-plus in the district, and we are advertising continuously to get more. But that's, it's been a workforce issue in getting, in getting additional people. And so, she does have some funding to continue to try to fill those positions, but we had a lot of vacancies. So, we took those out in order to cover the other expenses. But as far as what they do, I can...
Right. But before you go, though, so, the other expenses were insurance, et cetera, for the ones that we have.
Correct. These are covering costs that we've already incurred. So, the bonus that we just, that we gave, the insurance, increased insurance cost, there was a couple of other things that we, so we looked at ESER-2, and we said, what are the things that we haven't done or been able to do? There were 23 positions that we removed that were vacant, and then we covered the costs of things that we've already expended.
Okay. I'll hold my other questions until I hear from Ms. Brooks.
Ms. Brooks?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, under the mental health allocation, we added the position three years ago of the licensed mental health professional for our most intensive needs. So, these are students that through the mental health team, through their screening with parental consent, and then their discussion around the identified need and the intensity of that mental health need, our school counselors, social workers, psychologists, all serve mental health needs. Our LMHPs are there for the students that may need near-clinical-level services, or they need clinical level, and their parents are unable to access those services. So, it's kind of a tiered approach to mental health within our schools. Under the mental health allocation, we do continuously staff. We are not yet at full capacity. We do anticipate being at full capacity, hopefully, throughout the summer. We tend to get the bulk of our applicants in probably April through August, as people look to transition in and start a school year. So, with licensed mental health, we have had a human capital shortage across the state and country, as you're well aware. And with the 18 that we tried to put into ESER, we did that cautiously, knowing we may be unable to staff them. And at that point, it was a matter of really having to reallocate those funds to other needs that were just as critical across, you know, the district leadership team. Not to say we won't go back to trying to expand, but once we fill our openings under the mental health allocation, it would then be a fair time to assess other funding streams to continue to grow that part of our mental health services.
So, does that title, "licensed mental health professional," include the counselors and the social workers?
No. Under state statute, they're all called "school mental health professionals," and they specifically delineate in statute that those individuals are the school counselors, social workers, psychologists, and other licensed staff. This is a specific job description that is added, called the "licensed mental health professional." So, we added that in the school district to include and require licensure to do that level of work.
And it's a higher level of need from students, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Do we have more or less students that fall within that range?
Based on the number of open cases we have, which is, I think, and I can get you the exact numbers, about 3,900 open. It doesn't mean that we've been able to identify, of course, all the kids in need, nor have parents always consented to those services through school. We have over 800 cases that are considered intensive need right now. So, there is a high number, but there are, you know, a couple thousand other students being served at the mild-to-moderate level. And of course, that takes the work of everyone on the team.
And while you're there, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but I was speaking to a group of high school students last week, and one of the things they talked about was to, the ability or inability to speak with a counselor, or to speak with someone. How are we addressing that at this point?
So, we also have a shortage of school counselors across the country, state, and unfortunately, we have openings right now in the district, and we continue to recruit from outside and within. Our, a lot of our best school counselors are teachers, pursuing their master's degree. But we recruit across the country and the state as well. We encourage, and we will continue to do so, our schools, to make sure our students understand how to access the counselor and the mechanism to use. And so, while we have high ratios in social work, school counseling, psychology, and even our LMHPs, we want to be responsive to every student. And so, sometimes, our students are unfamiliar with how to access us, despite our best efforts to communicate that. And we are still trying to find more efficient and effective ways to make sure every single child knows how to access their school counselor, et cetera.
Okay. Vaughn?
Yeah, since you mentioned the shortage, and it's been, I can't believe it, eight years since I was teaching at Estera High School, but it used to be that counselors served lunch duty, that, you know, they were test proctors always, and various and sundry other things. And I'm guessing with the lack of substitutes, they may now even be tapped to go into classrooms. What can you say about, you know, I mean, if you need somebody in the classroom, and there's nobody else, but the idea of lunch duty and all of that, what can you tell me about that in the various schools?
So, with system support duties, yes, many of our school counselors in a typical year do, in fact, do lunch duty. One of the setups that we encourage them to advocate for, and many building-level leaders have seen the value in this, is to set up the counselor corner, or do lunch bunch groups in a small room off the cafeteria. And there are some that are more supervision-based. During, there is language in the contract regarding our student services staff and class coverage, and that was strengthened, I believe it was, heading into this school year. But with COVID and all hands on deck, our school counselors are frequently pulled beyond contract, and it's really just because we have class coverage and supervision issues. That's also another reason why so many of our district leaders have gone out to schools, so that our student services personnel can remain such while we're trying to supervise in their stead.
And it's really a catch-22, because you need them, and you can't have a classroom without coverage, and they have a different kind of schedule. But on the other hand, what we're hearing about so many kids, you know, in some cases, it may be a D or higher level, but in other cases, it might be something where they just need an ear. And you're right about, you know, teachers being the best counselors, but I know from, you know, my own experience, and, you know, unless it's a coach, or somebody, or the student can stay after school, which, if it's a younger child, that's not going to happen, you know, teachers have another class, or classes, and...
Right.
So, it's just very concerning that this is what we're facing, and our kids can't get the help that they need because of these shortages. But I'm just, you know, the lunch duty thing...
And I appreciate...
Most schools do not utilize them on lunch duty, because that's something that can be done by a lot of different people. And that's the time during lunch, is the time when kids have that opportunity often to see a counselor, so...
True.
It's a huge concern.
I appreciate you expressing that, because we consistently advocate for the counselors to be used as counselors. And so, having been in the district for a while, both school-based and also down here at the district, I feel, I do feel very encouraged that prior to COVID, the messaging and the encouragement, and the principals' desires too, were to tap their school counselors' time for system support, less and less, and really keep them where they need to be. And even with COVID, they are an option of last resort, not the first people that are tapped. And so, I do, I do, my feedback is that there is a cognizant decision being made by our school leaders to really try their best to tap counselors as the last resort. Yes, lunch duty at times has been part of what they're doing, but doing the counselor corner is also a way that kids can see one counselor and get some of the more housekeeping things done, like testing waivers for SAT, ACT, but they can request through that adult to see their counselor. So, there are some benefits, but I agree with you that it is a concern, and it's one that I feel is being worked on regularly, and I appreciate your thoughts on that and your support.
Okay. And if I might just put this to the superintendent through the chair, it sounds to me like it's a decision by the principal, but it's not something that we, as a district, have made a priority. Am I correct on that?
I don't know if that's quite a fair characterization. I would say, as a school leader, as far back as, you know, when I was a school principal as well, we really, when we moved towards more of a comprehensive health model, really addressing the vital significance of a counselor, we moved away from the idea of them as testing coordinators and things along those lines. I think each school is unique in the way they kind of approach this piece. They have unique needs. Some of the counselors that I've worked with, for example, they actually wanted to stay in the lunchroom, because what allowed them to do was monitor and watch the social settings, do visual check-ins with students in a way that they couldn't do. It was an access point that they had. Others, it just wasn't appropriate. So, I think there's, there is a definite commitment in our school district from a leadership lens, and all the way through, that the mental well, mental health, the well-being of our students and our staff is of the utmost significance to us right now. We recognize very few people on the staff are as qualified as your counselor, or your team of counselors. So, I would just say that that is something that's pretty well universally understood in our leaders, but I'm happy to ask academic services and school development specifically to outline for us in the weekly memo that comes to the board, what specific kind of guidance over the last couple of years have we given relative to this position, so that you kind of have the official guidance from school development through that piece, if that would...
Are we bringing in, I'm actually certified to do counseling, but a year, many, many, many years ago, when I did this, I had to do an internship, like a student teaching with the counseling. I'm wondering if, like our classroom interns, and maybe, you know, are we bringing in some of the students that are, and it may not even be school counseling, but, you know, the psychology counseling, maybe they're going eventually for clinical. Is that a possibility, and are we doing that?
We do have formalized partnerships for school counseling interns, psychology interns, social work, and we are going to be bringing to the board a new partnership for mental health counseling program interns through FGCU that will be supervised by our LMHPs. So, for each of those professions, we actively place in our schools with qualified supervisors and supervise our interns. And then, I just have to say this, we do hire our interns, and more so than a district close by that pays more. They like our district after interning here, and it's the best long-term job interview for principals to have as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Gittens, and if I may too, just as a reminder for us to try to keep it at our, what we had spoke about, our four minutes, so that way we can get through all these questions. Ms. Gittens?
And I just wanted to say on the end of this that I, you know, kudos and praises to all of the people that are working in the schools right now. Everybody is kind of like all hands on deck. So, I think where, a couple of years ago, before COVID, the conversation about not using, you know, the mental health staff to do other duties was more vital, but right now, I think everyone is of the impression that if you're in there, you may be doing anything. And I cannot give enough accolades to all of them that volunteer and do that to keep their schools running. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And Dr. Savage, thank you too, because when I'm in the cafeterias, and I'm, some of them are there in those rooms, and that's exactly what they say to me, they're there because they can see so much. So, thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely. And I thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for sharing that you are also certified, because I may be calling you in the future for some help.
On notice.
Moving on to item I1 in the consent, approval of budget amendment dated December 31, 2021, to amend the 2122 annual school budget. So, the question is, does this reflect the change in Quadruple A, capital projects, capital improvement, Section 1011.71, Section 2 appropriations have changed to reflect adjustments in current cost estimates of the board-approved capital projects? We have, Ms. Ledger?
Hi, thank you. No, this particular one does not address the Quadruple A. The items that you see, the movement of the funds in there, we approve, we have money set aside for multiple schools throughout the year to get new furniture. You see a movement from one object code to the other to purchase, put a... You see a movement from one object code to the other to purchase, put them in the right object code for the purchase of that. This is to put money in the right place for the Veterans Park portable remodels, to make sure that the funding is in the correct place for the remodels. We also have three guard shacks at three of our high schools that need to be, that need guard checks, so the money is moved to purchase or to build those three guard shacks as well.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, did you have any other questions?
No, it's my ongoing question as to how, you know, when we have something budgeted and it no longer is budgeted, what's the paper trail? And I've asked it before, so I'm not asking you to go into it, and I'm sure you'll get me an answer when you have it.
Yes, ma'am, I will. Thank you.
Okay.
Next item is item I-2, the approval of the monthly budget report for the period ending December 31, 21. And the question is, please explain 599-800-unappropriated fund balance. Ms. Letcher again?
So the unaprop, oops, sorry. Unappropriate fund balances actually in three of our major funds, the capital funds, the food service fund, and our self-insurance fund. So the state requires in certain funds that you hold a certain amount in reserves. For our food service fund, you have to hold three months' worth of operating expenses in reserves. In our self-insurance fund, you have to hold 60 days' worth of claims in your reserve funds. So those funds are set there. In our capital funds, the funds are set in there, as you know, as you look throughout our capital plan, in any one year, we cannot build or do what we need to do. So what we do is that money sits in the unappropriated for the future year in our capital plan. As you can see, the money then, you'll see it on the capital plan in the unappropriated, and in the next year, it gets spread out through with some more unappropriated to keep going, and down to the fifth year where we keep that reserve in there that you always talked to you about, the, I think we're at 5% or something right now. So that's where the money sits as we're going through and holding that money for future uses for capital and for the required reserves for the other funds.
Mr. Sir, any other questions, comments?
Bring it up later. I'll bring it up later.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, next is four particular items, all under the human resources J-2, 3, 4, and 5. These are all affiliation agreements with the respective higher ed entities relative to our intern placement. So the question is, what is the plan for the placement of interns? And then there's several questions, so I think Mr. Dodig is going to take them one at a time. Mr. Dodig?
Sure. First of all, the questions about the East Zone and the placement of interns in the East Zone, just so you know, currently in the spring semester, 42% of the interns are placed in the East Zone, 35 are placed in the South Zone, and 24 are currently placed in the West Zone. The star interns and early buccaneers from FSW are all placed in the East Zone currently.
Which one, I'm sorry, I missed that?
The star interns and the early buccaneers, they're called, from FSW, that's their nickname, are all in the East Zone. Also, recruitment invited eight final interns to be a part of the FGCU STAR program and FSW Early Buccaneer Program. So six out of those eight were also placed in the East Zone. So the East Zone is a significant priority to both the district and our partners. The next question was, who makes the decision on the placement of interns? That is a collaboration between the universities and our recruitment department.
Okay, and I'm sure you...
Ms. Gittens, go ahead, you have a question?
Oh, no, and I'm just saying, I'm sure you understand that based on our vacancies and our increased number of long-term subs and subs and all of that, you know, that those levels are going up and the others going down. What is our kind of history of keeping them? If they come from these different programs, do they come to us and stay?
Yeah, I don't have that data in front of me. Certainly, we're doing a workshop for all of you in two weeks from today, and it's, we have 90 minutes, so we're going to present a lot of that information regarding recruitment and retention, and we'll include that certainly in our presentation regarding sort of the lay of the land and human resources currently.
I just jumped the gun, okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome. See any other questions? Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, item L-1, and under operations, approval of the Phase 1 pre-construction budget estimate for Orange Wood Elementary School, AHU renovation. The question is, will you please, in a short answer and in simple terms, answer what is being done, why is it needed now, and is there a possibility price will change more or less? So this, actually, we have Mr. Ross here. Mr. Ross?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, Mr. Ross.
The simplest answer is a refresh of the HVAC system, so all of the HVAC controls, AC units, fan units for the entire campus. Your follow-up question, it is needed now. These are at their, end of their useful lives. And in terms of the price, you know, hard to predict what the industry might do, but it will be, it costs efficient for us to stop having to kind of patch it up and keep putting man-hours in it.
Band-aids are more expensive.
Correct, correct.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Dr. Savage?
Chair, item L-8, and again, this item was also polled. This is the approval to reject ITN number N-217404JA, the exhaust fans repair and replacement. This was polled, so the question was, this vendor was given a letter of intent, and I've asked what the legal ramifications are based on this, based on the law. So I believe we had Ms. Malley or...
Well...
Oh, yeah, actually, yep.
Ms. Jevonelli, did you have a question?
Well, it was polled, so I was going to wait for the, the attorney was going to do an opinion on this, so I, but I had already had it on my, had sent it in, so...
Very good.
It's up, that's up to the, that's up to...
So you're good with...
Well, I'm waiting on the opinion, so...
Okay, so Mr. Pre-Burnett, you're...
We'll be working on that. We'll be working, in a couple of weeks, maybe two to three weeks, we'll have an opinion to provide to the board and to the administration.
Okay, thank you.
So in the meantime, this will just, will stay polled?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll come back. Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, L-9, the approval to renew ITN number 187334LN, indoor air quality, environmental consulting, asbestos lead abatement, microbial remediation, remodeling, and painting. This one is from Mr. Ross to answer this question, which is, I would like totals of what was paid out to each of the three vendors for the last three years. Just totals for each vendor is all I need, thank you.
Okay, I have those totals if you're ready. And I'll do these by fiscal year. So for fiscal year 20, AMRC was $969,750. Captain Steamer was $330,624. And Fresh Air Solutions was $984,715. For fiscal year 21, AMRC, $798,220. Captain Steamer, $555,977. Fresh Air Solutions, $766,134. For this current fiscal year, which is not yet complete, AMRC, 400, excuse me, $401,834. Captain Steamer, $196,217. And Fresh Air Solutions, $243,842. Those were requested numbers for those vendors for the past three fiscal years.
Ms. Jevonelli, that was your question?
Yes, it was. Thank you. I do have another question. A few years back, this was on the Florida Auditor's Report for, and required us and asked us to get a refund back from this contract. Did we ever receive the refund, you know? This might be before your time, actually.
Yes, I would have to check, check on that to get that answer for you.
It was like $260,69,000 they wanted, or something like that. It was like, because of the contract was, the contracts we paid, overpaid from what the scope of the work was.
I can check into that for you. I'm not aware of that right now.
Ms. Jevonelli, could you say, who was that, who was that from?
It was on this indoor air quality contract.
Okay, thank you.
Auditor's Report.
Thank you.
Happy to get that and get that answer to that question.
That would be good to know.
Ready for the next item?
Yes, I believe so.
Yep.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Item L-10. L-10 is the approval for the ratification of the agreement to purchase the 14 and a half acres of vacant land to 01 Joel Boulevard, as well as item L-11, which is the approval for ratification of the agreement to purchase 9.95 acres of vacant land at 225 Joel Boulevard. The question is, can you give more specific details on the location of the property, please?
Yes, and that location would be the corner of David Avenue and Joel Boulevard in Lehigh Acres. A good landmark would be close by the Lehigh Resort Club.
It used to be.
Right, okay, that's what I was wondering, right near the light where Belle takes off to the high school.
Correct.
So it's the Admiral something or other that was back over there.
Correct, because currently we own one property, and these will be subsequent parcels that connected.
Because I remember we had the parcel and nothing was done because it was too small.
Correct.
So now we're, this is to add two more parcels to what we have?
Correct, for a total of approximately 50 acres.
Okay, and what is the, you know, the thought as to what you'd put there?
No specific school has been identified, but given the parcel size, it does give us flexibility for several different school sizes, from a pre-K, excuse me, a K-8, a elementary, and a middle, and we're discussing if a high school would also be appropriate.
Can you give me real quickly, I always forget this, the acreage for each one, do you know that off the top of my head?
Not off the top of my head, like Scott does, but we can, I can definitely get it to you.
That's all right, thank you. I mean, he just rattles.
Yeah, Scott, Scott can rattle those right off.
And he would say, I told you that, Ms. Gittens.
Right.
I forgot, okay.
And Mr. Ross? Thank you, because it does definitely say that it is for a school site. And 225 is the old resort, because that is the address, and that was the restaurant, 225.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's definitely part of the Lehigh.
But isn't it behind there?
Behind where the...
Behind where the restaurants and stuff are.
It's gone, I'm not sure where that restaurant was.
Okay, excuse me, but can we, I'll buy you lunch. We need to go to Lehigh, and you show me what's what, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jevonelli?
Thank you for asking that. So the, this is, so we have a, we have a third piece that we already own, and these are adding the two pieces to it. Okay, and so I know we had some property listed on, for sale, that was, but that's on the Joel and Tuckahoe area, right?
That was my next question, yes. What's happening down the street?
And I was going to ask on the status of that. And how many acres was that? I can't remember. We need an update on that.
Ms. Jevonelli, finish her questions, and then we'll come back to you, please.
Oh, no, that's the question I had down, and she's doing it, that's what I said.
So my understanding, that is a separate property, but I would have to get the current status on that property, but that is separate.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested, because, I mean, I believe in not selling stuff right now, so, and that area, I know that was listed at one point, but I don't know the status. I think we need an update on that, on all, what's listed and what's not listed in the plan again, so if we could get that on the...
Things actually our planning department is working on is the real estate property that we have in the Lehigh area, and the projections in terms of where the students will be, and we'll have recommendations on the different sites, and that's something that we are working on, on a very upcoming workshop.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Jevonelli, but you're asking for, you would like to see the list of properties for, inclusive, for all of Lee County, not just Lehigh?
Correct, yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's...
Thank you, yeah. So anyways, I just wanted to say, I support this. I think it's great that we're going to pick up, that we're going to complete a 50-acre parcel, so I don't think it's big enough really for a high school unless we can get something, another piece near there, so...
Yeah, it's not big enough for our current prototype high school.
I, I know, but it's great. It's a great location, so I'm excited for, I'm excited for Lehigh for that, so thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ross regarding this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
So much.
Madam Chair, item L-12, this is a Good Cause item, approval for the easement and well agreement with the City of Fort Myers for raw water production well purposes at two school sites. And again, Mr. Ross, if you can help, the question is, please explain this item?
Yes, so this easement is going to allow the City of Fort Myers to install a well on two of our school properties. The City of Fort Meyer schools have been having some issues with water pressure, being able to flush toilets, you know, the, some of the cooling towers receiving the water pressure that they need, and in working with city staff, it's a citywide issue that they're dealing with, kind of actually comes from last, last offseason when not as many snowbirds went home as usual and kind of use up a little more water than the city's used to them using. So their solution is they established, installed wells at several different locations across the city. Two of those locations are Dunbar Middle School and Rebbe Potter, and they need access to the easement in order to do so. They will be not close to the school and outside the gated area of the school, and so we're looking to get this done so they can quickly move on this project. The drilling is ready to get started. It would take about 87 days, and then the actual installation of the well is 10 to 12 months, so a long lead time on these projects, and they need to, they're really anxious to get going. And just in addition to that, our maintenance department kind of looking to see what they can do to assist, have found the installation of booster pumps could also assist in that in the, definitely in the short term while the city is still working the projects, and it would have long-term use after the wells are actually installed.
Is it, I know that they were having the problems right behind there at Heritage Palms, so it's, and we back right up to that, so that's where it's coming from. So that's not taking any water from our schools though, right?
Yes, it is.
It is, it's doing the same thing in our schools?
Low water pressure is taking water, water pressure from our schools. The city is aware, they're working with us. They actually even monitor it and increase water pressure when our school hours are in and decrease it afterwards, so we're, we're working closely with them on this issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, occasionally, there are bathrooms that have to be shut down, but our maintenance team kind of has a low water protocol that goes into effect, where they check toilets, get porta-potties out, get hand washing stations out, so they're really on top of it.
I'm sorry, we are getting porta-potties at, at the schools for our kids?
Yeah, in some cases, when bathrooms, when there's low water pressure and we're not, have to shut down bathrooms, we are getting those out there so they do have, still have that access.
Sorry, Ms. Jevonelli, did you have, and then I'll go to Ms. Gittens, because I know that was your question.
No, thank you, I just wanted to, I just was curious about it, and I thought it would be good to know about it. I do have another, another topic regarding a school that you and I need to talk about, so we can do that offline.
Yes, yes.
I'm just sorry, I haven't had a chance to return your call, so thank you. And there you go.
Ms. Gittens, I have been to be speaking to the superintendent when the mayor and the city manager brought the conversation up at the Horizon Luncheon, so in the conversation, and my, my question to them was, is it going to cost us anything? And their answer was no.
No.
So I just wanted to make sure that they just need our easement to be able to do it, and it will benefit us, so I think it's a good thing, good partnership.
City staff has, has asked, requested if they need to come and present to this board on what they're doing, they will do so.
Take care of the babies. Dr. Savage?
I believe that were, that was all the questions that we had on the agenda today, Madam Chair.
Is there any, I guess I'll just go down then for, anything for good of the order? Ms. Morgan?
None.
Ms. Vaughn?
None.
Ms. Gittens?
I have a couple of quick things, and my computer just went off. If you will give me just a second. Hold on one second, sorry. Okay, a couple of questions that I have. One is, I know, I don't know where we're at, Superintendent, on the hiring of the maintenance manager, but I would like to ask if the rest of the board would agree to see all of the applications from the three finalists, if we could agree to ask for that, please, and also have... And also have Attorney Bruno to look at them as well? So I don't know, that's a direct to the superintendent, so I would appreciate if everyone agreed to do that.
May I ask, I don't think that's on this agenda. And why would the attorney be, why would we be asking the attorney to look at it? Just out of curiosity.
Would you...
So I think that, Ms. Gittens, please correct me if I'm wrong. The concern was regarding qualifications? And you were asking, because there's only two things that can the board reject a recommendation from the superintendent? It would be moral turpitude or the ability to do the job? Is that what you were asking, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, it was.
So in the past, that has happened, where a request was made to the board attorney to review the applications and just to determine whether or not there was anything of concern. And I believe that's what she's asking.
And I would also like to see them, so that's what I'm asking. Can I?
Mrs. Javonelli?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't think it's going to take too, that's not even, it shouldn't take too long. I would just like to see the score sheets on them.
So when I, I was saying, the applications and all of the paperwork, the score sheets and all, so...
Anyone else? Ms. Fisher? Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Morgan?
You mean on this issue?
Well, yes, because we are on this issue, and you're asking for us to direct the superintendent. So that's why I'm asking the other board members if this is something that they would like to see. Ms. Morgan?
So if a board member has a concern about the process used to select a candidate, I think that's something we address. I'm not sure we should be in the business of looking at applications and resumes for appointments by the superintendent, other than the ones that we've, you know, job descriptions we've approved. I just, I don't understand, if we don't believe that the process is a good process or the process has been used correctly, that's our responsibility, and that needs to be addressed. Why I would need to see applications from three people not knowing if that's the issue? I'm not sure I understand.
I can shorten this. I will just do a public records request. So I don't need everyone's approval to do it.
We just don't have anybody, there's nothing, it's not coming before us. We don't have anything in front of us.
No, but it was something that I, as a board member, was asking to see. If the rest of you disagree with that, then that's fine. I will do a public records request to see the information I would like to see.
Ms. Javonelli?
I too would like to see it, and I don't think it needs to be a public records request, because I think it's just a couple, you know, it's just a quick email. It's not even, there's no, the board doesn't even have to approve that. It's not going to take very long. So the information's there. For me, it contradicts what I was told earlier, so I would like to see that information. Because I was given different information, and now all of a sudden, the information's changed. So I do, I would like to see it.
I'm not sure what that is all about.
The issue here is directing the superintendent to give us the information that we're asking for. So we have a choice. Either we can, as a board, agree to let two board members see something that they are requesting to see, or if you refuse to do that, then I will just ask for it in a different way.
Well, the thing is, if he sends it before, he cannot send it to two. He has to send it to everyone.
Correct.
And, because that's the way it is. And then we, what do we do with that information, once we have that information? Or the attorney, what are we doing with this?
So this is not the first time.
Thank you.
That requests have been made with regards to a potential hire or higher. Sometimes the request has been sent in by a board member, and it has score sheets, resumes, et cetera, have been provided in the board update. Sometimes they have been special emails that have been sent, so the board can have whatever information that they're asking for. And then at that point, the board doesn't usually come back. I think they're just asking for the information for knowledge, so that they understand. And sometimes they may have further questions that they bring back to request additional information or what have you. Or even if they are approving a potential employee, they have the information to be able to make their vote. So this is, this is not unusual. This is not the first time that the board has requested this type of information.
Ms. Fisher, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering exactly what is it that we're asking for? I don't know that I...
Simply the paperwork for the hiring process for the maintenance director. That's it. The score sheets, the paperwork that went along with it. It's public record.
Okay, and I guess I missed that part, that that was what it was. I didn't know what it was that you were referring to. Thank you.
So can we take consensus for the superintendent to share that information with all of us? Please, thank you.
Thank you. My next thing is, it's another direction. But I believe when the presentation about the vegetables and the power-buying group and the companies, I had a discussion with Attorney Bruno about it. And the, no fault on staff or anybody, but I think that it's a little confusing. And in order to simplify it, if we could ask Attorney Bruno to work with Susan Malley to give us a simplistic visual description of the difference between the power-buying group and our purchase of vegetables. If you remember, the discussion came up, and Ms. Malley said, no, that has nothing to do with vegetables. But in the community, when you talk about food right now, all of it's all in one thing in their mind. And I believe that we can clarify better by saying, like the discussion I had with her today, why this is one thing and this is another, and it's separate. I don't think in the minds of the community and the taxpayers and even me until today, really understanding. There's two silos, there's two different things. How we got this one, how we got this one, that this is a temporary fix, and what's going to happen with this, and so on and so forth. And, you know, it's kind of out there right now with a different impression. And I just think in transparency, if we could just ask them to give us a simplistic visual of where we're at.
Okay, I would have to make a comment on that one, because I think that Ms. Malley not only told us once, she made it so clear multiple times what we were doing with the food. And if there's confusion, I don't know how that can even be. And as far as Mr. DePree Bruno doing that, I think she has enough to do. We have so many things coming down the line, and for, I don't know how, okay. Nothing against Mr. DePree Bruno, but I don't know how you make it simpler than what Ms. Malley has already done for us.
Well, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
What Ms. Malley explained, in my opinion, last time, was the power-buying group. There was not a specific explanation about the vegetable piece, because the comment was, this has nothing to do with it. But it didn't say an explanation of that. And I just am asking, if one of us has a question about something, I really believe it, whether you agree with it or not, it behooves the rest of us as a governance team to make sure that all questions and issues for any one of us on this team get the answers that they desire, whether you agree and think that it's a question or not.
I'm not disagreeing. It's your question. Dr. Savage, Ms. Malley is here. Can she respond to that?
No.
To clear up the difference of the buying group and fresh fruit, that they're totally different, and why we were getting that refrigeration and everything?
Madam Chair, would...
Would that clear that for you?
Madam Chair, I know that we could bring her up here now, but for time's sake, and I'll know. I'm asking to give her time. There's a legal piece of it, as well as there's a financial piece of it. And the legal piece is what was explained to me by our attorney. The financial piece is what Ms. Malley did. And all I'm simply, I think it's simple that they can do that. It's not a lot of time. I don't understand the pushback in, anyway.
Madam Chair, if I may, so we're pretty used to, as an organization, on a weekly basis, providing information based on board member requests of just clarifications, things like that. Knowing that this has been discussed in the public sphere, there's a lot of potential misinformation and misunderstanding on this area. I think it probably behooves us to have some additional just explanations from the people who are the best experts in our district to answer these types of questions. And I'm more than happy to sit down with Ms. Malley and Ms. Messenger and just kind of think through, okay, let's just, if we were to try to make this so that the board members have great, easy-to-answer information for the most common misconceptions we have, or how this goes, I think we could probably put something together for this week. If not this week, then certainly by the end of next week, so that you all have some great information on this particular topic, if that would fulfill the request.
Well, and if I may, the reason I mention the attorney is because of the contracts that are involved and the contractual part of it. And when she explained it to me, I understood it a lot better. And I just, anyway, you all decide.
So would you all like for Dr. Savage to send us something that would clarify the misconceptions of Ms. Gittens? What are they sending us again, please? The misconception of food and produce?
No, the power-buying group, can you please say that?
Ms. Jordan, I think I can probably clarify this, because this was a conversation during our one-on-ones today with Ms. Gittens. And I, let me try to see.
We can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
And we didn't get that one-on-one, so...
It's not on.
It's on.
It's on. I think I can explain where Ms. Gittens, and Ms. Gittens, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what she's trying to, what she's trying to convey is that a breakdown of the contracts that deal with both the power-buying group and our contract with regards to fresh fruits and vegetables, and in terms of what each of those contracts mean and the amounts of expenditures, plus the different items that have come before the board in terms of agenda items since September. I think that's what Ms. Gittens is trying to say, that to provide a little bit more information and context and break it down, because there's so much misinformation. I have worked with Ms. Malley on this very, very closely in terms of all of these contracts. I am not opposed to providing a little bit more of an explanation in terms of the contracts. And I know that in working with Ms. Malley, we can probably come up with something that's very simple to be able to provide that information. That's completely up to the board's discretion, but I do believe that's what Ms. Gittens was talking about.
So consensus on, would you like to have them work on this?
And just, Ms., before you do the consensus, just to give you an example. For example, there is some information that the district is spending $35 million on warehousing food. That is completely incorrect. The district already had $26 million allocated for food, and we're not talking about fresh fruits and vegetables. We're talking about tacos, we're talking about pizza, we're talking about cheese, we're talking about bread and crackers. $26 million allocated for food. When we had the supply chain issue, procurement came, Ms. Malley came back to the board on an agenda and asked for an increase, because we knew that we had an emergency that was coming, and we increased that to 35 million. Then we came back to the board again and said, well, we're not going to use all of this 35 million, but we need just under $1 million to warehouse food. And then I don't remember if it was 4 million or 3 million, 4 million? 4 million for the transportation. So it was just an additional $5 million that was requested. It had already given us 35 million. $26 million of that was already allocated for food. We asked for 35, we actually expended $5 million, a little under $1 million for warehousing, $4 million for transportation. Why did we need to do that? Because the vendor from the power-buying group, we do not negotiate with that vendor. The power-buying group negotiates with that vendor, needs time in order to be able to provide those resources, the transportation and the warehouse, because it's not just Lee County. There are, what, 10 or 11 counties? Oh, my goodness.
But if I may...
30 different counties that they need to be able to supply. So that, I think that's what Ms. Gittens was trying to...
That's the type of information put together simplistically, so people understand that is what I was asking for.
And actually, thank you, Mr. DePree Bruno. And that's exactly what I heard when Candace spoke to us and Ms. Malley. So you just shared that with us again. So thank you, I appreciate that. So can we take a consensus on that? That Ms. Malley works with Mr. DePree Bruno to get this information? Four, five, four will, yes, and two will live with it.
And my last thing that I have is to ask Attorney Bruno to give us an update on the Lighthouse Whistleblower Project. And I'm, not now, I'm just asking if we can get an update on what's happening with Lighthouse.
Mr. Javonelli?
Is that on the parking lot, or no?
It is.
Okay. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Gittens, anything else, please?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Javonelli?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, I have nothing. Ms. Patrica has nothing, she's not here. Mr. DePree Bruno?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Savage?
I just want to extend a thanks to the staff for providing all the information, not just for today, but also just for jumping right in action in terms of superintendent search. I know he had HR, a number of folks had to jump right in and help with a lot of these issues, and just really thankful to the staff to be able to assist in court quite short order. And just also a kudos to the board. It's very exciting to know that we are on the precipice of a pretty important decision. And while I just really appreciate that the board is taking this so seriously and doing such an excellent job, really deliberating, so thank you to you all as well.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. So, no, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Just one additional thing to all the board members, that Ms. Howard is providing at a weekly basis all of the comments that come in from the website about superintendent search. And she just sent the most up-to-date one to help us go through that.
That was very nice of her. That was helpful.
It was added on our information this morning.
Yeah, she added it, yeah. So seeing no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.